Good evening and welcome to the Westboro Select Board Meeting called here on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. The agenda's been posted and I think streaming on Westboro TV as well. So to kick off the meeting, I would ask anybody who was able to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice alone.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is open forum. I did not receive any requests for it, but as it is open forum, is there anybody here wishes to speak? Seeing none from the site plan. Are you all here or are you waiting for others? I know we're a little early.
No, we have critical mass, so we can start.
Okay. And this isn't a public hearing, so we can start ahead of time. Yep. Perfect. So, welcome. Marshall, how are you?
Good evening. I'm doing fine. Nice to see everybody face to face again.
Same here.
I'm standing up as counsel for the applicant, but I'm really just going to introduce the parties who are here tonight, and then I'm going to turn it over to one of them. So the applicant is Samuels and Associates out of Boston, and we have one of the principals here. This is Mike Fitzpatrick, who is going to do the presentation tonight. And the engineer is with us also, and that is Brian McCarthy from RJ O'Connell Engineers. We may have one more person from Samuels coming, Peter Sugaredi, who has been here many years ago. He was involved in doing the Sam's Club many, many years ago, but he's still a young man. So without wasting any of your time, I'll turn it over right now to Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. So thank you to the select board. Excited to be before you tonight. One correction, I am a senior VP of Development at Samuels and Associates, and it so happens that Peter Sugaredi's just walked in, so Peter is a principal and partner at Samuels and Associates.
Yep. Yeah, if you can just make sure you're talking to the sometimes those pickup.
Sounds good. Okay. So anyways, thrilled to be here tonight. So we have a brief presentation, and so what I'd like to do is I'm going to run through introductions, tell you a little bit about Samuels, and then jump right in and walk through the existing site, which I'm sure everyone knows very well at this point, and then more about the proposed redevelopment. So first, Samuels and Associates. So we're a Boston-based real estate developer. We have over 20 years of experience in building communities and mixed-use developments, commercial developments, life science projects, and really pride ourselves in the involvement of the community and how we approach the development of real estate and really make it a collaborative process. So we're thrilled to be part of the redevelopment of 25 and 29 Research Drive. So we have assembled an incredible team of qualified professionals. So starting with Marshall, who you all know, Marshall is our local counsel, and then we have Beals and Thomas engaged for wetlands and survey. They do a lot of work in the area on that front. And then Brian with RJ O'Connell. Vanessan Associates is doing all the traffic for us. They certainly know the area well and have been involved in a lot of the development in this area. CRB is the architect that we've engaged. They're very well-known in the industry, especially for the type of project that we're proposing. We have a landscape architect, Michael De Angel landscape architects, and then we have our team that's going to be taking care of the Mepa side of things, Epsilon, Haley and Aldrich, our environmental consultant, and then our mechanical engineer is WSB. First, a little bit about the redevelopment plan. So we're looking at creating an innovation campus, and on this campus, there'd be a combination of uses. So we're looking at life science, research and development, office, GMP manufacturing, which is good manufacturing practice, manufacturing. We'll talk a little bit about that and what it means. And then office and amenity space that's tied to it. So we look at it as creating a place that's flexible and visionary, where people can come and really promote the collaboration and really a good environment to both work and discover. And we look at how we connect the buildings to the surroundings and how we incorporate outdoor spaces as part of that. So I'll be brief on the existing site. I know you guys know it well, but we're looking at two parcels, so 25 Research Drive and 29 Research Drive. 25 is currently where the BJ's corporate headquarters is located. It is, well, I'll start with around the site. We have commercial developments on both the east and the west. To the south, the back of the project is the conservation area and the connection to the Walcott and Robinson Trail Network. And then the front abuts directly on Research Drive, which connects to Route 9, and then right around the corner to 495. So, you know, right now, the site is occupied by some very dated buildings as far as bringing in new tenants and attracting the types of tenants and the quality of tenants that we'd like to have at this location. So we've taken a hard look at the buildings, reuse of those buildings. It just, it doesn't work for the development that we're proposing. And then on the other side of this 29 Research Drive, it's currently occupied by Tri-Bro Crane. So they used it for both Crane and Rigging Company, and they have storage throughout the site, so I'm sure you all know that as well. And they have a handful of single-story, commercial-type buildings on that parcel as well. So the existing conditions, we have a lot of topography, a lot of wetlands to work with. We're looking at that as some natural features that we want to embrace and use as part of how we lay out the new development. So we're looking at how we minimize and actually improve the quality of those surrounding resource areas, and then how we work the natural topography to locate the buildings and then make these connections between the buildings. And then we'll touch on this, including a connection to the trail network that's to the south. So the proposed development, so this is the overall site plan. It shows the campus itself. We're looking at three buildings plus a fourth building that's an amenity building. The total square footage is 715,000 square feet. We would be coming in and for the entire site, we'd be looking at a complete demolition, both the buildings and the utility infrastructure, really looking at a full ground-up development, where we bring in all new infrastructure and then obviously build new buildings along with a network of driveways and sidewalks and, you know, interconnect those buildings through the site. And then with that, we would include all-new landscape and hardscape, plus a meaningful and welcoming environment for people to get outside and, you know, whether you're walking between buildings or going to another building that we have identified as an amenity building, but very much designed and sited in a way that it fits in with the topography, which is some of the challenges, but it really takes advantage of the natural environment and preserves the natural environment. So with the plan that we're presenting, it does fully comply with zoning. So we took a hard look on how we can best lay this out and do it in a way that we can comply with all those zoning requirements. So, you know, really creating an environment that will attract the right mix of tenants and really create this innovation campus where people are going to come and, you know, work in this industry and really promote additional discovery and work in this particular field where they're developing both medicines and gene therapies in the life science realm. To the project benefits, so there are a handful of wonderful benefits as part of this. So certainly bringing some great jobs to the area, several different skill levels. It's not all PhDs that come and work at a facility like this. There's actually a range of available jobs and, you know, looking at a significant increase associated with the project. Certainly on the tax revenue side, it will be a substantial improvement to the type and the quality of the buildings and the overall campus. So certainly an opportunity for a substantial amount of additional tax revenue. And then again, looking at how do we best lay this out when we preserve the natural environment and the characteristics. And a big piece of this, too, is that we are looking at a site that currently, it is dated and it does not meet what you would want to see for all the new standards and how you would lay out a site and really collect and treat, and a big one is stormwater, how do you collect and treat the stormwater before it discharges to those surrounding resource areas, which at, right now, it is, a lot of the site is just sheet flowing out and directly into the wetlands. So we'd be looking at a whole new stormwater management system, collecting, treating, then discharging, and really looking at improved quality of the resource areas. And then, as I mentioned before, really connecting through a network of sidewalks, all the buildings, and then ultimately a connection to the back behind one of the buildings, which would be to the Walcott and Robinson Trail Network. So that's a very brief, high-level summary of the overall project, and I figured I'd stop now and turn it over for Q and A.
Great. Thank you. Open up to the board for questions. Anybody have initial questions? Patrick?
Sure. I'll start things off. Thank you very much for presenting tonight. It's a beautiful piece of land from the vantage points I've been able to see over the years, and I appreciate the design. I think it seems to be a nice design. I guess my questions, and you kind of touched on it a little bit, was around the wastewater. This building, if my math is correct, is about, the buildings themselves are roughly three times the size of the current existing buildings, and you have, you're anticipating increasing the size of impervious parking by about 63%. Westboro is about 15% of impervious material townwide, and that's a significant increase. So I'm curious, I see a number of our planning board members here, if there's any alternatives to how that can be addressed. I don't know if a parking garage would solve that or whatnot, but to kind of minimize that impervious footprint and then try to maybe, maybe there's even an advantage there in regards to consolidating the total overall stormwater wastewater management, or excuse me, stormwater management into a smaller area. So just something to consider and for the planning board to discuss with you, I guess, in the future. I did notice that the two front buildings don't have the same setback. I'm just curious as to why they don't have the same setback from the main road there. Is there?
Sure. It's really a function of the existing topography, and we have to work around ledge and around whether there's a lot of items that come up that could actually create a feasible place to create this building pad. So that really drove the location of the buildings, keeping in mind that we have to maintain all the appropriate setbacks. So we do maintain the required setbacks. And again, fully comply with zoning. It's really about, based on the site that does have a significant elevation change, and if you go and drive around, you can see the ledge out properties that we have to deal with as well. So that really led to the siding lease, plus we have to reserve space for stormwater management and the system and overall design. So, you know, that comes into play with the location, certainly in one of the two buildings, because we have an improved detention basin that we're, we would be building as part of this to address the stormwater management and overall the impervious component of this. The big benefit here is that we have a very large site. We have certain items that really don't allow this to be built to a point that you'd be basically topping out on what's allowed from zoning and adding all this impervious. So we're able with this design to really preserve a lot of that open and green space and preserve a lot of the natural wooded areas. And then for the areas that we are adding impervious, it's a very careful and well-played-out design for how we manage that. And again, we really would be buffering the wastewater, we would be treating it and just changing the overall, sorry, long-winded question, long-winded answer, but it's, really what drove that is the condition of the site and the large.
Yeah, just the reason why, you know, we have in the town, we have our CAP, our Climate Action Plan, and our Master Plan, which speak a lot about, you know, impervious tops, you know, coverings around town. And that's why I just, any time I see a significant increase to parking spaces, I would, I'm just a little concerned about that number growing from over 15% now to getting larger. My other question is just, and I'm not sure, I didn't notice any elevation drawings in our packet. Is that something that would come later and that would be brought back before us at a later time to share with us, the elevations?
So certainly we'll share them. They're still in development.
Okay.
And so, you know, our focus was on the best layout of the site and how we best integrate the buildings in the site. We're advancing the overall elevations. So we will have some materials, including a perspective looking at a couple of the buildings, but that is all in development right now.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This is an exciting project. I'm wondering, of course, my computer just went off, can you sort of highlight on the diagram where you'd be connecting your sidewalk system to the trail?
Sure. So right here, the Walcott and Robinson Trail Network is back here, and it's actually, it's hard to see in this because of the lighting, but there is a network of trails that goes right up against the boundary, the southern boundary of the property. So there is a slight difference in grade, but we're looking at how you'd create that connection from sidewalks that come through the site to the back over here and then down to the trail network. So it would be on the southern part of the development.
Okay. And I'm not sure if this is a question for you or maybe for the planning board. Does this also connect the proposed route for the B-Walt Trail? I'm seeing a yes from our town planner. Thank you. Any, to Patrick's question about elevation, do you have a sense of building height at this point?
We do. So it's going to be under 60 feet.
Okay.
Right now, the zoning allows up to 90 feet. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So it would be under 60 feet. We're still, you know, fine-tuning the overall height of the floors, but it will be under 60 feet.
Okay. And then one last question. Any, looking through the drawings, I didn't see, or maybe I missed it, anything in the way of conduit or infrastructure for electronic vehicle parking?
We do plan on installing a certain amount of EV stations, and we're going to have the ability to have EV ready and expansion. So, you know, that's something that we, I think we've identified. Brian, how many spaces on the site?
I was wondering about 30. 30 is all.
Yeah, so right around 30 spaces that we're locating now with the ability by way of having EV ready, that there could be some expansion from that.
Okay. And would those be available for guests as well as tenants?
They would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks. Sean?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I agree. This looks like a very exciting project. Thanks for bringing it forward. I believe I read that you're considering doing the project in phases. What would you consider phase one of the project to be?
So we had, we had discussions about phasing, and really we're looking at how we can get all this to come together and be a large construction project and ideally construct the buildings together. Just as far as getting the right tenant mix, you know, there could be a situation that we decide to defer on, say, building two and focus on building one and then roll into building two. So when we talk about phases, certainly the initial phase, we come in, we demo, we bring in, we build all the infrastructure, do all the site improvements, and then we would advance, ideally, three of the buildings together, but looking at flexibility, because we want to make sure that we're attracting and bringing the right tenants, that we may focus on one of the buildings or two of the buildings based on the traction we have with tenants, and there could be another one that could be a little more specific. But the goal is that we build them all, we would build them as spec buildings with, you know, being careful and thoughtful what we want to track for tenants and having the infrastructure available for those tenants. So we're looking for, really looking for the flexibility that we could layer into this, some phasing, you know, based on the timing of the tenants and the buildings.
Thank you very much. Yep. Shelley?
Yeah, thank you and welcome. Thank you so much. Very exciting project. A couple of questions. One, you, in the beginning of the presentation, you said you would talk about what GMP is, if you could elaborate things.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So GMP, Good Management Practice in Manufacturing, in the life science realm, it's a very controlled environment, and it has to meet a lot of standards and order for the, really the creation of and advancement of medicines and gene therapies. So you're looking at a set of processes in that manufacturing space that you're delivering a certain level of quality. Well, use water as an example. There's different levels of water that needs to be delivered to that space so that you can actually manufacture these medicines to a point that it can be injected into the human body. And so it just brings a whole different level of what that manufacturing space needs to be built out for and what it needs to accommodate. So very, just highly regulated, you know, very clean environment with different modules in that space for how they can, you know, use these different materials and really create these medicines.
Okay. Thank you. The, you answered my question on the bike trail, so thank you. I did, I, no comment really needed, other than just in our letter that goes to the planning board, just want to note that the sewer capacity that is needed for this is significantly more than what is currently onsite. I do, you know, appreciate that there's a total overhaul intended for the site for infrastructure utilities, but obviously would have to be permitted appropriately to whatever the building was required, and just want to note that. But this is great, very exciting, and actually I did one other question. What is the amenity space?
That's my question.
Oh, sure. So the many, there's a separate 10,000-square-foot amenity building, so it's there as an amenity both indoor with some outdoor space, that it's there to serve the building tenants in a place where they can all go and whether they're going for a walk, to work out for lunch, or have lunch outside. So it's being built for, really the benefit and creating this nice environment for the right talent to be attracted to come and work at these places.
Okay. So is it like gym space or dining space?
It could be gym space, cafeteria space, flex space, collaboration. It's very open right now.
Okay.
But it would be, you know, really an add-on and what would make this such an attractive place to come and work.
Okay.
And I will say that we have, we've had the benefits. It's been great here in the town of Westboro and working with Jim and all the town staff, and we certainly have already met with the town engineer and with Water and Sewer a few times, and so very in tune to that side of things and looking forward to talking through them more.
Yep. Thank you as well. What I like is, and it's interesting, you mentioned the development of the old Sam's Place, which is Sam's Club or whatever, I think is what you said was a previous development. And what I like about this is moving the parking behind. One of the things, if we could do it all over again, wouldn't put the parking in front on Route 9, it's just ugly. So I do love what's happening here and really kind of having the buildings and parking more obstructed from view. I think it's a, it's a nice look for the town and actually probably is better for tenants as well. So thank you for that. Going back to the amenity building, I guess, but in the other buildings, are there thoughts about cafeteria space? Or if that was the case, it would only be in the amenity building or any?
Thank you for that. So yeah, each of these buildings are mixed-use in nature in that they're going to have the manufacturing space, the office space, the RD space, and they will have amenity space. So the buildings will have interior amenity space, and so it could be the cafeteria space, could be a fitness room, very much driven by the type of tenant that would be coming in, but they would have that component internal to the building.
Okay. Perfect. And from the building design, and just to have you put it all together, are you looking that these buildings would have multiple tenants, single tenants? Does it, is it whatever comes your way? Or what's the concept there?
Great question. So we've looked at both. So, you know, if we get the right tenant and it's desirable to have, we're looking at how we create these buildings in a way that it can attract a tenant that would take the entire building. And if we have a series of tenants, we're also looking at how we could demise these buildings so that it could be flexible and you could bring in, let's say, three tenants instead of the one. And in looking at that, it's always the potential exists, and there's the ability that we do it in a way that there would not be an impact to the overall plan and the overall zoning and everything that we're presenting. It would really be, where do you draw the line and build a wall and distribute within the building the utilities to support those tenants? So it's, right now, it's open to single tenant or multi-tenant. We're keeping that flexibility so we can really bring in the right, the right tenants.
Perfect. Thanks. And then the one last question I had is back to the stormwater management. I think there's some in the front of the property, existing retention ponds in there. I think we've had flooding in that area. I don't know how much that's been maintained. Is that part of the plan of kind of taking a look at that and making sure that it's draining?
Absolutely. And so we've looked at the overall design of the system. We've looked at obviously what's contributing to the specific detention basins and the other areas. And then our design incorporates both revised and expanded or improved detention basins, plus we have underground detention. So out of sight, out of mind, but it's below the parking lots, and basically it's also collecting a certain volume, storing it, infiltrating, buffering it. So we're reducing the amount of stormwater that's actually contributing and going to those existing areas over today's conditions. So there's a benefit there. We have certainly heard of some challenges where there has been some flooding, so we're also looking at a couple of both inlet and outlet pipes and confirming that they're functioning as they should be and that they're clear of debris. So that will be part of it, too. But, you know, we're really looking at-
Probably trying to find them first, right?
Well, it's funny you say that, but, you know, we have, we've actually got it with ground penetrating radar to find some of this, and we're going to continue to do that. But again, the design that we have on the stormwater side reduces those margins and flows.
Perfect. That's great, and that's an improvement to the property that we know we have an issue with right now, so that, I appreciate that. If that is all, anything further from the board?
It's an exciting project. I should have said that at the outset, so.
Great. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. And we look forward to this moving forward. I think we had a couple of comments, just, Christie, did you get those just to pass along to the planning board? Perfect. This is, thank you very much for being in front of us.
Excellent, yeah. Thank you very much. So glad to be here. Look forward to talking more.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all.
You did give us a lot of paperwork to read through, 103 pages of it, I think.
Yeah, I hope you enjoyed that.
Got me to sleep last night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did I just yell that to you?
I decided not to question it and I'll do the stops on.
I think he stepped out.
Scroll down the page. Skip to four or? Any more on that? Anything to move along? Okay. Actually, while we're waiting here, I'm going to jump ahead if you, if folks are fine with meeting minutes.
Sure.
Cross that off.
I move we approve the minutes for the March 8th, 2022 meeting of the Select Board as presented.
Seconded.
Okay. Any comments or corrections on that? Yep, all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present for the March 8th minutes. Thank you. And now we turn to item three on our agenda, EMS service zone agreements, and I looked down and then you were gone. And Chief Purcell, thanks.
Yeah, hi, no problem. So Patrick Purcell, serving as your fire chief. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I just ran up and down the stairs. So under chapter 111(c), section 10 of Mass General Laws, we're required to have an EMS service zone on file with the state. That's done through the regional office, and when I looked at ours, it was pretty outdated. Most of the names on it were of people that don't work here anymore. So myself and Captain Doucette updated that plan over the last month or so, and it was a little bit of work because you have to contact all the healthcare facilities in town, see if they have contracted EMS, see if they don't. If they don't, find out why. The why's where, explain some things to us about our call volume, which was pretty interesting. And it also establishes like who the first responders are here in Westboro, and it also talks about if there's any contracted EMS providers that are working in town, like a private ambulance company, of which there are two. So the primary healthcare facilities that we talked to were Whittier Rehab Hospital, Westboro Behavioral Health Hospital, Westboro Healthcare, Beaumont, Whitney Place, Willows, et cetera. And we found that a couple of them don't actually, Westboro Healthcare has no private ambulance contract, so everybody that's going out of that facility are coming by us. There was a, there was a dedicated ambulance at Whittier that is no longer there by MedStar Ambulance, so we've picked up, picked up a lot of that slack. They're still serving them, if they can, out of Worcester, but we do a lot more calls there. And it also talks about the deployment of resources in our town, what our back, who our backup agencies are and the contact, people at those locations, and primarily we use North Borough Fire, South Borough Fire, Hopkinton Fire, sometimes Upton, and who am I forgetting? Occasionally Worcester EMS, because they have a truck in Shoesbury. So from time to time, we use them, and it talks about how we deploy our own resources and how we staff our equipment, who our first responder agencies are in town here, who are primarily West Borough Police and Massachusetts State Police. State Police have jurisdiction on two significant parts of our town that we go to, meaning I-495 and Massachusetts Turnpike. And so the record that you have before you that was in your packet outlines like all of that. It outlines a plan that for some- in your packet outlines like all of that. It outlines a plan that for some reason the taxpayers feel that they don't want to have fire department supported EMS here, which I hope never happens, barring what's going on like today, today in the world with worker shortages. The fire departments are really picking up the slack where other companies can just close and not, they're not really held accountable to anyone. And it talks about our, kind of like our, what it really does is establishes like a model plan for like if there's a disaster here, if we're going to call resources from a lot of different places. So my request to you tonight is just to authorize the town manager and myself to sign off on this. And if you sign off on that, we're going to send it to the regional EMS office in Holden, Central Mass EMS Corps. They'll give it a review. And once that's done, they'll ship it off to the state. And then the state gives it its final approval. And hopefully, we won't have to redo it for a long time if you keep the current administration in place that exists today. That would be great for us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Alan.
So you mentioned in looking in the paperwork, there are only two facilities listed that have contract ambulance services?
Yes, sir.
Are all of these other facilities supposed to have contract yet?
Well, in theory, yes, it would be nice if they did. But right now, they just cannot get them. Supposed to? I don't know. I don't know what the rules that govern the nursing homes are and rehab facilities, unfortunately. But the fact of the matter is they don't have them. I could tell you that a quote out of Westboro Healthcare was that they called pretty much, or they called every EMS, private EMS company in Massachusetts and they can't get anyone. There's a private ambulance company in Shoesbury that we support. We've provided a significant increase in mutually aid there in the last year and a half. We're just starting to pick up a little bit into Grafton, who has a private ambulance company. And it's not, it's not just us. It's, you know, Shoesbury's divvying up the calls between Boyleston, Northborough, Westboro, time to time, the privates if they can, if there's any available. But we used to see them driving through town all the time. And frankly, they're just, they're just not here right now. I'm sure they'll be back at some point in time. I'm not sure when that is. I'm very close with the Framingham Fire Chief. They have a contract with an ambulance company for six paramedic trucks right now. It is expiring on June 30. And they were told flat out that will not happen again. They just don't have the resources to provide that. So we're about to have another, another glitch in that part of Metro West. But it's not, it's not just here. It's across the country until they get the worker shortage issue worked out. So.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, chief. Thank you very much for this. I certainly support it. You made me think of a question I hadn't thought of. With these IMA between other municipalities, I'm imagining we charge them for when we dispatch to their, to their towns? How does that work?
We bill patients.
We, it just goes to the patient?
We bill their insurance. I shouldn't say patients.
Okay, so there's no billing back to the towns themselves that were providing that additional service to?
No, sir.
My other question was just on section two, excuse me, part C, section two B. I was just curious, just a little anecdote story. Twenty odd years ago, my son broke his arm on a trampoline. And I think it was a couple of firefighters showed up, a couple of police cars, and at least one ambulance showed up for a broken arm. I'm just curious, are all, it says here, any and all requests for emergency medical services. Is there not a further kind of dispositioning of services that would kind of determine if, what level of participation should go? I'm just thinking, you know, the additional cost of the town. I certainly want to have the right emergency people on scene. So I don't know if there was any, any future thought on somehow dispositioning those calls better so that we get the appropriate level there and not send, you know, 10% of the force or something there for a broken arm?
Sure. So the answer is we already do it. I had gotten your questions earlier and I was prepared to show you all PowerPoint, but my laptop just died. The answer is, and I, and I think we know this, we don't, we don't send those resources to every single call. We have emergency medical dispatch here in Westboro. The fire department manages the public safety answering point. They triage the calls appropriately. When we go to a healthcare facility, unless it's a violent person or a crime, the police traditionally don't, don't go to those calls. If it's a priority three call, which is usually a less, a less serious call, the fire truck does not go all the time. But I can't tell you that's not, that there are many different facets to the way we look at the delivery of EMS.
Okay, so it's, this isn't like always, this isn't what always happens, no matter what? Okay.
So I, if I could have played you the PowerPoint, there are large patients.
Sure.
I'm not going to say, try to save a couple of gallons of diesel fuel and put it on the backs of the firefighters. And because like, yep, we could probably muscle our way through a call of a 250 pound person with all of the required equipment that they're supposed to carry and the carrying device a few times. But we're going to ask for a $25,000 back injury real, real quick if that is a repetitive occurrence. So we flag calls for people that are large. We have facilities that have rehab patients that are 700 plus. We've had to buy new stretches, bariatric stretchers to accommodate up to 750 pounds. They get the fire truck. Unconscious people get the fire truck. People that are, what the dispatchers triage as a significant, or a critically ill person, get the extra hands because there's paramedics on the fire truck. If the fire truck is closer, they'll pick up the call and get there earlier and start to deliver care. If it's a car accident, the fire truck blocks so we don't get driven into taking care of patients. There's a million different ways to look at these calls. Sometimes they need a third person on the ambulance. Cardiac arrest in the emergency room takes seven people. But sometimes we get criticized for bringing six people there. And when patients are really saved in the street and not the emergency room, and we get the exact same care in both places. So we try to deliver enough to actually save a life instead of try to drive them 20 minutes and then say a prayer.
Well, having been a recent user of your service, I certainly appreciate your, you know, your team and what they do for the town. My final question is around, just the next, on section E on this was around healthcare facility destinations. Does an individual get to choose whichever location they're going to go to?
The answer is maybe.
Okay.
Usually, we like, we let people choose. So we have added, what's new on that is the Boston hospitals. And that was pretty much to cover us. And I want the state to sign off on that for going outside of our region and into Boston with certain, certain patients. We have some critically ill people that are now being managed at home. They may have an LVAT device. They may have a cancer, rare cancer with a specialty team in Boston. We have some really sick kids in our community that are on IV pumps at home. And the physicians that manage them, or perhaps somebody had a surgical procedure, only done at Mass General in the world, that it doesn't do a patient any good to take them to UMass and sit on them for, until they can get a private ambulance to take them into Boston, when really it takes us 20 minutes longer to get to Mass General than it does to UMass. So it's just smarter and it's better for our residents.
And then just to bring that around to a billing question, does, do we, do we charge for the distance that, that is, or how does that, okay?
Yep. So we do. We have a tiered billing system that is, we bill depending on if we get BLS, basic life support, advanced, two tiers of advanced life support. And it's called ALS one and two. ALS two, which is the higher level, would be tripped if we do critical intervention like a chest decompression, cricothyromy, endotracheal tube, or actually we have another level after that. More than, more than three medications, it's somebody that's requiring extra hands on. And then we have a specialty care rate, which is usually saved for any one of the rehab facilities if they have a patient on a vent or a pump, where we're using like critical care equipment. You funded us at town meeting a year and a half ago for vents. They have a lot of trach patients that are on vents. It's just better for patients. So we leave them on them, but that's, that's a different rate. But we have, yeah, the billing system's pretty complex.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Shelby.
Once again, I'm always overwhelmed at what you do every day behind the scenes. And so appreciate you taking the time here.
No problem.
Because I think sometimes that, you know, it's, it's just your everyday, but the public, I think, needs to have an appreciation for, you know, how those tax dollars are spent. And things just sort of happen seamlessly. So thank you. Just to follow on to Alan's question around facilities. So I certainly appreciate the healthcare worker shortage. I guess I sort of also look to you, Christie, in, for example, Westboro Healthcare is one of our newer facilities in the area.
That's Westboro Behavioral Health Hospital.
Oh, sorry.
A Colonial Drive, oldest.
Thank you. Sorry, I was thinking behavioral healthcare. Sorry. Disregard.
Low user.
Yep. No, okay. So I was just curious, is for any of those facilities where they were, you know, they have, were permitted or licensed, you know, are they required to have their own service? Because the easy thing would be to, with contracts and competitiveness, would be to rely on, you know, our awesome local team.
They don't want us.
Okay.
Wear more money.
Okay.
They have contracted rates.
Well, I know they do. Right, right.
They don't contract. No 911 services, contract.
Yep. But that, that also hurts them on the contracting side for competitiveness and being able to get the services. Okay, you answered my question. Thanks, chief.
Sean?
Yeah, just a quick one. And this is just more, whenever you come in front of us, it's an opportunity to learn. So thank you very much, chief, you know.
Hope I'm the right person.
Let's just find, understand those words, trachea, this and that.
Well, I-
Nothing you ever want done to you.
Now, I did not realize that there were sort of, if you include, I guess, paramedics as EMTs, that there's three levels. And that, that was new to me as I read through this. And I guess it's paramedics, and then it is what there's basic, and, and sorry, I just lost where my-
Advanced EMT?
Advanced. Thank you very much. Maybe you can just give us a little bit on kind of the difference and maybe a breakdown.
Sure. So we don't have any advanced EMTs. Advanced is the middle of the road. It's the old EMT intermediate where they were allowed to do intubations and IVs. And really, when we had a couple of them left, it put us in a weird position because if you're doing an IV and placing a breathing tube, you should really have the paramedics in the back. So we kind of did away with that and negotiated that out of the, out of the union contract. So an EMT is a person that goes to school and learns basic first aid, how to deliver babies, how to do CPR, bandaging, splinting, et cetera. And they learn that over about 120 hours. A paramedic has to go to college and they go for about 18 months of didactic and clinical rotation. Then they have to stay for state and national boards and have, and both levels do a certain amount of continuing education and a formal refresher every two years. So one is 120 hours and one is 60 college credit hours, which is 60 times 16, nine, something, 900 and something hours, I think-ish. But it's a pretty much higher level of care. Like the, the ability of, of the skills of the paramedics, of treatment that paramedics can deliver far supersedes what the EMTs can.
Thank you very much.
I hope that helps.
Yeah.
Can I ask one following? Just are we, like, I hope we're not, so we're not providing kind of non, like wheelchair type services to, like, for example, dialysis? That, that, okay.
No, we don't do transfers.
Okay, that would be considered transfers. Thank you.
Yes, we don't do transfers.
I just want to make sure.
I think you see an exit out of my department pretty quickly.
Yeah, no, no, wait, well, and it's, and those are at a premium. I mean, those are very difficult to secure even from facilities. So, yep, thank you.
Thanks. I have no further questions on this. Just, Christie, I just, a question for you, not for the chief. But I know in our summary here was, we want to authorize the town manager. Any, you haven't heard anything back yet as to whether you can sign or whether the board has to sign.
The board doesn't have to sign as long as you authorize. We get a question about whether or not you even need to come to the board, but it sounds like it was good that it did.
That was great. It was great education. Okay, perfect. So I would entertain a motion, please.
Yep. So I, I just lost it. I move-
I got it.
Go, thank you.
I move to authorize the town manager to execute the emergency zone agreement application.
And I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Have a great night.
Okay, moving forward. Item four, the insurance memorandum of agreement. Christie?
So we have been working with the insurance advisory committee for a few months and negotiating a couple of changes to some of the existing provisions that are in our current agreement, which will expire at the end of, at the end of the fiscal year. So, so the two changes are, we have a healthcare reimbursement account. We actually just funded it at town meeting. Under that account, we had to keep that, the funding of that account at a level of $200,000. And that was the funding at town meeting of the 24,000, 20, about 24,000, 25,000. Because we, we only use about $16,000 a year for that account, we negotiated that down to the 100,000, which in looking through claims and things, that looked like it was about, probably about our total liability. And so we were able to negotiate it down to the 100,000, working with the unions, which was great. They completely, you know, understood that, that request. And so we would be able to go in October and actually rescind that, that reason appropriate. And then the second piece of it is we're going to offer a voluntary high deductible plan. It's something that we've been talking about with them for a really long time. And so we would have, actually have the open enrollment in June, making sure that we're able to give a lot of information around it because there's a lot to learn sort of about the high deductible plan benefits, but then also having a health savings account, which would go along with it. And the open enrollment would happen in June and then people would move on to the plan on September 1. We would actually make it available for new hires beginning August 1, so that we're capturing particularly new teachers who are coming on during the month of August. And the town would offer a contribution towards the health savings account for an individual plan, $1,000, and for a family plan, $2,000. But overall, it's a net savings for the town even with that contribution. And that would be for the two-year period of the term of agreement.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Christie? Okay, there are motions.
Just thanks for all the work. There's a lot of work behind the scenes for this kind of-
Well, thanks to the IAC, the committee as well.
The IAC as well.
Yeah, I'll just let you know, I'm going to recuse on this because of the nature of the contract.
Perfect. So noted in the minutes. Thank you.
Motion?
Yeah.
Move to approve the MOA and insurance changes as presented and further to authorize the town manager to execute the agreements with each union. I'll second.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Not, all those in favor? That's four to zero with one recusal, five being present. Perfect, thank you. Again, thanks again for, please pass that along to the committee as well for their work on it. Okay, next, outdoor dining extension. I believe we had information passed out.
Yep. So just going back to the beginning of COVID, there was an emergency order that allowed restaurants to go through an expedited process to have seating outdoors and to serve alcohol. And so for, for your portion of it, you were able to approve these licenses for alteration of premises, which would typically have to go to the ABCC for approval as well. But under the governor's order, we were allowed that expedited process. So we, so you did authorize that for multiple locations during the pandemic. We still have some restaurants that are taking advantage of that because it was extended multiple times. It was due to expire on April 1 of 2022, but the governor did sign legislation to have it continue through April 1, 2023. One concern that we have is that we don't know how, how often this is going to be renewed. And we expect at some point, likely next year, the governor will not extend it further. And so that what you have on your desk is a letter that was sent out by our EDC coordinator reminding businesses that they needed to prepare for making this a permanent change if they wanted to do it this summer. That was sent out, I believe, in the beginning of March. And, and we actually didn't, didn't have anyone come in to apply. And then we were sort of all crossing our fingers that it was going to be extended on April 1. So our recommendation is for this board to extend that, the authorization for people who've already, for the folks who've already come before you, to actually the end of this calendar year, 2022, unless they begin a process to make the permanent transition. And I think this will just give us that buffer where we can really be working with the businesses and giving them an incentive to make this a permanent transition if they expect to serve outdoors in the summer of 2023.
Perfect. I think that makes total sense. And for outdoor dining, not many were doing outdoor dining after, between December 31 and April 1 or whatever. So, any questions?
Just so I'm clear. So the governor's allowing this to the end of, or to April 1, 2023. Our action here would be to align with that?
The governor gives you the authority to extend it through April 1, 2023.
Okay.
The, my recommendation is for you to only extend it through the end of the calendar year unless someone has begun the process of doing a permanent alteration of premises.
Which is basically the letter that-
Right. So, so there's two pieces to that. There's a site plan piece where they have to go before the planning board. And then they have to come back through. Actually, alteration of premises is something that's been delegated to the town manager. So I would hold that hearing. so I would hold that hearing. Um, and then it would have to go to the ABCC for approval.
Okay. So, we haven't, for those businesses that, um, are, have been or were providing outdoor dining as a result of COVID and allowed, have, none have come before you to, for a formal, um, a final permanent extension?
So, we did have, uh, we had, we have a couple that have reached out, um, and then one that scheduled the hearing, but the alteration of premises hearing can't happen until the site plan hearing happens. And so, there's, I think there's some confusion around that, so we'll certainly work to educate in the next few months. And Zach had reached out, but, um, I think that there was sort of given what was happening with COVID, people were unsure as to whether or not it would get extended, so.
Okay. And we're just building in a timeframe then to allow us, allow those businesses to go through that process, but not bring it to DEFCON 5 of March?
Unless they've, yeah, unless they've, um, started the process.
Okay.
Is, is there any requirement? So, we've given restaurants approval to use parking spaces in their lots, for example, which, um, granted, it's on their private property, but it reduces the number of off-street parking spaces used and pushes cars to other places. If they're not actively using their, or doing the outdoor dining, is there any requirement that they dismantle and restore their parking spaces?
Uh, there's no requirement for that, but that is why there's a site plan component to the permanent alteration of premises. And so, so I can't, or as the local licensing authority or the deputy, we can't authorize service of alcohol in a space that they're not permitted to, to use for restaurant. So, that's why they have to go to the site plan first. So, so no to your question, but also that's why there's a site plan component because of that potential reduction in parking spaces.
But that is waived based on the governor's order?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just, yes, one question you made me think of. I guess a little bit of his, his history question here is, um, you mentioned that this would be a permanent, right? So, if they applied, and after December, this would become under permanent, um, site plan approval and license that they would have to do this. Before COVID, did we ever have the ability for businesses to do this previously? So, this is, okay.
Yeah. So, we, we have other restaurants in town that have gotten permanent alteration of premises allowance for service outside. One example actually that we did recently was, um, Civic, when we, um, we had, we had to amend their lease so that, so that they had the authority to serve on the course. And then they went through the process with the ABCC, um, to, to be able to serve alcohol on the course.
But really, but really with them too, with their, um, their deck, which already had outdoor dining, went through that process.
Yeah, there's Ted's.
Bertucci's went through it.
Yeah.
Ted's did it.
So, several.
Tabalino's did it.
Yep.
Oh, Red Heat has done it with their outdoor dining. So, that's the pro, that's a normal process. What happened with this was so many others could do it just to help the businesses.
Sure.
What we're trying to do is get this back to.
I think the plan makes sense.
Great.
Jim Robbins, do you have a Shelby? My fellow board member reckoned, said, recognized him. He raised his hand. I didn't see you, so.
I was going to raise two hands. No, I thought maybe that would help. So, I just wanted to piggyback on what Kristi said. If this becomes a permanent situation, any restaurant that did not prior to COVID have outdoor dining would have to amend their site plan. So, for example, a restaurant on Route 9 is required to have off-street parking as opposed to the downtown. In the downtown district, you're not required to have any off-street parking. So, if they're operating in parking spaces now, they would just go through a site plan to make sure that, um, emergency access was provided. If they're in a district where off-street parking is required, like I mentioned, the Route 9 district, then they'd have to amend their site plan to make sure they still had adequate parking for the use. But it would go through a formal process so that they would be approved to do that from there forward.
Perfect. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to amend the outdoor dining policy as presented.
Second. Anything else? All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Thank you for that. Okay. Next is the request to approve job descriptions and amend classification plan for both an energy advocate intern and children's librarian, adult services librarian. Figured it was you.
It's me.
Okay.
So.
Laura's yours.
The first one, the energy advocate intern, is a position that is, um, it's new. It is fully grant-funded and it would support the work that the town is continuing to do under what was formerly the Mass Save Partner, Municipal Partnership. It's been rebranded the Community First Partnership. But to steal a little bit of the, um, town manager's thunder from the town manager report, we just received, um, a three-year grant award. This is now a three-year program. We will continue to do the work. Mass Save is seeking to, um, enhance engagement among low-to-moderate income customers, renters, landlords, English-isolated customers, and small businesses to, um, improve, for those populations to take advantage of energy efficiency measures provided through the utilities. In our case, EverSource and National Grid. The program requires a lot of outreach. This position is largely intended to support outreach to those groups. We have, the job description that is in your packet was provided by the partnership. This position is a requirement. When they funded us, uh, they made it clear that we needed to either identify an existing staff person to serve in this capacity or what we're seeing with most of the 34 communities that were funded, they're creating and hiring specific for this role. Um, again, we're looking at this as an internship, um, ideally. This would be an intern. We don't, um, we expect to reach out to several of the schools, the colleges that have programs, environmental, um, policy, planning. There's a number of, of types of degree programs, um, but we will also post it through our traditional means. And it is a temporary, non-benefitted position. The grant runs on a calendar year, so this initial hire would be through the end of the calendar year. We are also looking to fix the pay rate at $22 an hour. So, we'll treat, this is a little bit different than some of the other positions you're used to seeing. They fall into our traditional classification where there are steps. This we're putting with a group of positions that are just at a fixed rate. For instance, the library pages are fixed at minimum wage. We have several positions and this would fall in that category.
Great. So, there are questions? I'm going to take these two separately just because they're very different. So, any question? I guess I had one question. Uh, as an intern, this three-year program, um, I'm assuming that one, if the program goes away, we're not looking to hire this as a full-time.
Correct.
Or a position paid for by the tax.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I would just say that if, obviously, we all know.
Unless you made the argument for it.
Well, no, no, I was just going to say that we all know that we were going to have a, we had deferred as a sustainability coordinator position. And if that were to, um, be a, a position in FY '24, these responsibilities in other towns likely sit with the sustainability coordinator.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm sorry. We just said that this is three years, it's a three-year grant, but the position only is through the end of the year. What did I miss?
The grant funding is allocated annually.
Oh.
And it is not, it's the full amount. We were awarded $40,000, but the full award is based on our achieving goals that we established in the application.
Okay.
So, it's not guaranteed funding. So, we are making sure that the, the 50% of the funding that is guaranteed for year one, um, will cover this position.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the energy advocate intern job description as presented and amend the classification plan to reflect the position falling under the general group compensation schedule at $22 per hour at an average of 15 hours per week.
Seconded?
Moving seconded. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present.
Thank you. All right. Next up, there are two librarian positions, the adult services and the children's librarian roles that are currently vacant. And as has become our habit, um, this is our opportunity to review the job descriptions, make any modifications. So, the, the job descriptions, they're relatively minor updates. The library director is bringing those forward. Just seems like the right time. One of the, um, things I just want to point out, we are not changing the classification. None of the, the changes were substantive to result in a change in the pay grade. In both of these positions, um, we're just using more descriptive titles than the generic librarian to type of title that we had.
Okay. Other questions on those?
Quick question. So, the, there's supervisory changes within these roles? I don't know if you can briefly talk to those or?
Sure. Um, when the, currently, the circulation supervisor job description identifies that position as having supervisory responsibility over the library assistants, and that is the practice. These job descriptions also reflected some supervisory responsibility over those same positions as that has not been the practice. And because it's in conflict with another job description, we're removing the word direct supervision. It's indirect supervision. So, for instance, if a library assistant is assigned and working in the children's department, they're reporting through the children's librarian. However, the formal supervisory authority rests with the circulation supervisor.
Patrick?
Yeah, I guess, um, correct me if I'm wrong. I didn't see it. Under language skills, I don't see any mention of, um, any sort of requirement for multilingual. And, um, I think this would be a vital role, uh, capability to have in our libraries, individuals that are multilingual.
It's not currently part of the job description.
Is that something we should, uh, should we include that?
We don't. In the job posting, when we advertise, there's also off, there, that may be the opportunity to include reference to it being preferred.
I, I think in previous job descriptions, I think I've seen that referenced, so I, that's why I was. Whatever is appropriate. I just think it's important that we, we, um, make it clear that we're interested in candidates that do have multilingual capabilities.
Yeah. I think it's a great question.
Other questions?
Uh, yeah.
Yep.
I'm just, um, how, uh, how long have these two positions been open, Kim?
Um, they're both recent.
Like, in past three months?
Uh, no, weeks.
Oh, weeks. Okay.
Yeah. It's been, sorry. Yeah, it's been less than a few weeks.
Okay.
And in fact, um, one may have, the, the, one may have been, as of this Monday, it's been vacant.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Motion?
I'll move to approve the job description of the children's library, librarian and adult services librarian as presented and to amend this classification plan to reflect the revised job titles. And second?
Okay, moving seconded. All those in favor? It's five, zero, five being present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, being slightly past seven o'clock by my clock here, um, we have a joint meeting with the planning board. I see members of the planning board here. And this is a discussion, a presentation on housing choice. So, I turn it over to Jim, I guess. Welcome to the planning board. I'll call the joint meeting to order.
Good evening. So, while he's getting set up, I'll just, I'll just remind the, the board that, um, a few meetings ago, you were made aware of this and you appointed me to work with, um, uh, the Housing Choice Working Group. So, we've had a number of meetings over the last two months now, I'd say.
Yeah, six weeks probably.
Uh, great team, did a lot of great work, a lot of good discussion to get us where we are today. And I hope that, uh, we're able to provide you all the information you, you need, um, to be aware of. I'll say that this is a milestone. It is part of the process that we have to achieve and you'll see more on that in a moment.
Great.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Robbins, the town planner. I see my planning board sitting right behind me, watching my back. Thank you very much. I want to start off, first of all, by thanking all the members of this group. Selectman Welsh, Town Manager Kristi Williams, our planning board members, Mark Silverberg and Pete Bouchard. Also, um, as you see Fred Leonardo, our community development director, and Derek Sari from the Department of Public Works, and Kristin, my assistant, who helped try and organize all our meetings. Sometimes like herding cats with so many of us. But, um, we really did work hard on this. We reached out not only to DHCD to get more information about the program, but also to our neighboring communities that are struggling with the same issue to understand what the legislation requires. And before I start the presentation, what I, I want to do is I want to put two things in your mind. So, as you see requirements for density, number of units that might be created in Westboro over the, over the coming years, as well as ideas about the MBTA station and the distance from the station. Please keep in mind that the legislation only requires that the town put into place zoning or rules that could create units sometime in the future. There's no deadline for creating any units even in our lifetime. There's only a requirement that we put into place rules and regulations at the local level that would incent developers to build housing in the future. And the reason that we're going to do that, you're going to see, is so that we can maintain our eligibility for state grants. Thank you. Time delay. So, we're going to be talking about, uh, four things in particular and then we're going to have a time for discussion and, uh, and questions. The first will be the legislation itself.
I'll swatch when you're clear.
Thank you. And it looks like I have a pointer. Maybe not. Okay. So, the MBTA communities are, are divided into categories. First of all, all communities that are served by any MBTA service are, must provide zoning to allow for multifamily housing by right. That means no special permit. It means site plan review only. With a greater obligation for communities with higher levels of transit service. So, on this map, you'll see various colors. The darker color are for communities that have multiple MBTA services. They have commuter rail, they have the subway, and they have bus service. Those are the inner core cities like Boston and its immediate surrounding suburbs. Then you have the communities that are served by the MBTA bus system. Those are in the outer ring of the outer core. Then you have the communities that are in, uh, a green, a shade of green, kind of tealish color. Those are the commuter rail communities. And you can see Westboro is one of those communities surrounded by, uh, Southborough and Grafton. And then you have the communities which are considered, um, abutting MBTA communities, which are also bound by this legislation. So, even though they might not be a host community, they're going to be required to create, uh, housing at denser levels under this housing choice legislation. But can you advance it for me? I think that's going to be more efficient. Thanks very much. So, an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted. And I have another slide that explains what reasonable slide, size is. Next. So, multifamily zoning requirement. It's otherwise known as the Housing Choice Act. Now, this was codified by legislation which created a new subsection of Chapter 40A. Chapter 40A is the State Zoning Act. We know 40A when you think about zoning and special permits. You think about the comprehensive permit bylaw, which is Chapter 40B. This is a brand-new section called Section 3A. At least one district of reasonable size is required. Multifamily housing permitted as, uh, as of right. No age restriction, so this can't be a senior housing community. Suitable for families with children. Minimum gross density of at least 15 units per acre and not more than a half a mile from a train station. Next. So, how could we use this funding? We're going to be talking about the Mass Works programs, you know, we've participated in, the Housing Choice Initiative, which we have not because we don't qualify, and a new program, the Local Capital Projects Fund, which is aimed at housing specifically. Next. By complying with the MBTA community legislation, Westboro would remain eligible for Mass Works infrastructure, infrastructure programs. And in 2021, it awarded an average of $1.1 million per project in 51 communities. So, that's something we definitely want to be involved with and we have been. We want to continue. The Housing Choice Initiative, which we'll talk a little more about, and the Capital Projects Fund. Next. So, what are these programs? Mass Works Program, as you know, is for design and construction funding for public infrastructure, particularly for building roads, installing utilities, creating biking, pedestrian opportunities, and public property improvements. The Housing Choice Initiative, which we are not currently eligible for, is for community capital grants for infrastructure upgrades, updating master plans, zoning amendments and studies. And finally, the Local Capital Projects Fund, which is a housing authority-eligible program. Next. In the last five years, Westboro has received one Mass Works grant at $1.3 million, as you're aware, for the West Park Drive Extension and Flanders Road project. In the near future, this year, this June, we're going to be applying for another Mass Works grant for funding the Otis Street Corridor project. And we may be eligible for housing choice initiatives in the future depending upon what our development projects are going forward. In the years in the future, state may funnel more state funding through these incentive-based program standards, pursuing more Mass Works projects. I expect we will be involved every year in the Mass Works program. So the draft guidelines, what's actually required. So the Mass Housing and Community Development Department has draft guidelines that are publicly promulgated at this website, mass.gov backslash MBTA Communities. And if anybody wants that link or a summary of the program, I'd be glad to provide that for you. Next. So on the left-hand side, you see the requirements of this new chapter, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, and what the draft guidelines must include. So at least one district of reasonable size, multifamily housing permitted by right, no age restrictions, suitable for families with children, minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, and not more than a half mile from the train station. So what does all that mean? At least 50 acres total. So one district of reasonable size means at least 50 acres. That's what the guidelines say. No bedroom units in the zoning. One district not more than a half mile from the train station must be at least 50% of the total land area. So what that means is if we have to have 50 acres within a half mile of the train station, the state has said, if for good planning reasons, and if you can connect another district to the train station by means of public transportation, you can locate at least 50% of that land area outside of a half mile from the train station. So we'll be looking at that going forward. The total capacity for Westboro, based upon the acreage and our existing number of building, I'm sorry, dwelling units in Westboro, would be 1,250 units. That's 15% of our current housing stock. So you see there's a little asterisk there, and an explanation that says this number is based on current housing units and community type. Westboro is categorized as a commuter rail community, and therefore is required to have 15% of the total housing units be within this new district. So the legislation is not a production mandate or a requirement to build new units. It's not related to Chapter 40B, which allows developers to bypass local zoning in communities with less than 10% affordable housing. Currently, we have more than 10%, so we're fortunate. That wouldn't apply to us unless we had a friendly 40B project. Next slide. So how are we going to comply with the draft guidelines? Well, currently, we don't. As you know, our transit-oriented village zoning allows 14 units per acre, one short, but by special permit, not by right. So we have to look at the area around the train station. Will require future zoning changes through town meeting, and the plan must be approved by DHCD prior to going to town meeting for zoning changes. So what's required, again, to be redundant, 50 acres, at least 50 acres within a half mile of the MBTA station, at least 15 residential units per acre, and a total capacity of at least 1,250 residential units. Next slide. So what's the timeline for us moving forward? So this is a continuum, and it shows three types of requirements. The blue triangle are things that we've already done. DHCD requested public comments from the municipalities that would be affected by this. Public comment period was from December of last year to March 31st of this year. And our subcommittee put together a letter that was sent to the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development, and we stated our concerns for the legislation and offered some suggestions on how they might modify their legislation to allow more creativity and to serve the communities that are diverse. As you can imagine, some of these communities that are adjacent to an MBTA station may have no public infrastructure, no public water and sewer. So for them to absorb dense housing at 15 units per acre is going to be quite a struggle. So in reading some of the comments that came from other, from other communities, I saw serious objections to the legislation. We don't have quite as heavy a lift, but the impact of 1,250 units is significant, and we need to do good planning. By May 2nd, we have to submit a brief to the selectmen at a public hearing, which is what this is. We're doing that right now, and where we explain the MBTA community information and what we are going to submit in the future. Also, between May 2nd, I'm sorry, by May 2nd, we must submit our current status and how we comply. So there's a form that we have to fill out and submit to DHCD that basically says, here's what we have in place, and we recognize that we don't currently comply. So over the summer, in the summer of this year, 2022, we'll put together guidelines to be discussed. And also, DHCD will issue their final compliance guidelines. The reason that they asked for our comments was so they could reevaluate their program. They may make some changes that will benefit communities, hopefully that'll benefit us and give us more flexibility. That's what we asked for in our letter, that we would have more flexibility where we could plan for these units. So our working group will continue to meet and draft a zoning plan. By May 1st of '23, next year, we'll have a proposed plan presented to the select board and the planning board. And by July 1st, we'll submit them to DHCD for approval of our action plan. Again, that needs to be done before we go to town meeting for any actions to change zoning to come into compliance with the acts, because we don't want to come up with a plan, enact it, and then have DHCD not approve it. We want to make sure that we get their approval before we go to town meeting. In 2024 March annual town meeting, we will bring together our zoning to be presented either there or before December 31st, which is the drop dead date by which you must comply. So as you can see, this is not something that's imminent. We're in April of '22. We have to have a plan in place with zoning approved at town meeting by December 31st of '24. Next. Discussion. I have a couple more slides after that. Thank you. So if anyone's wondering, what is a half a mile from the commuter rail station? This circle represents a half a mile from the center where you see the little T standing for the train station, MBTA symbol. And you can see the areas that are encircled by the half a mile radius. Part of the transit-oriented village, all of what we know today as the Westboro Commons next to, not Westboro Common, I'm sorry, Village Commons next to Westboro Village, all of Smith Parkway, part of Fisher Street, and many of our industrial properties, as well as the reservoir, which is in green. And I was asked, how come there's property lines in the reservoir? It's because those were properties that were taken to build the reservoir. Those are in green. They're underwater now, so we don't need to worry about overlaying that part. I think we have one more slide. So this is an ortho, again, of the same area, and you can get, if you enlarge this slide, you could get a better idea of the types of uses that are there today. But keep in mind, again, that only 50% of this reasonable area has to be within that circle. So at least 25 acres needs to be set aside here. The other density could be obtained somewhere else in town, as long as we had access to the train station. Thank you.
Great. Open up for questions. And Mark, I can work with you. This is a joint meeting, so we're going to have questions from both boards, I guess.
Why don't you guys start, and let me cover some of our questions. I'm pretty much up to speed on this.
I figure two of you, two of you probably are, so, yeah. Okay, Shelby.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. One is on the capacity bill out of the 1,200-plus, is that new? Or is it encapsulating existing plus new?
So we don't get any credit for existing units.
Holy moly.
Shelby, there's no requirement for new units. The zoning is the zoning, so if there was a blank slate.
Can you just, Mark, can you come up, because, for people? Yep, that's okay.
Shelby, so there's no requirement to create new units, there's no requirement to allow additional units. If the zoning, the underlying zoning is based on a blank slate, so it doesn't matter what's on the site. It could be the Amazon building.
Sure.
Right? It just has to be, if somebody wanted to take that site and develop units, what could they do? It could be a site that already has residential units, like Westboro Village, right? As long as the zoning would allow for 15 units an acre. Does that make sense?
By right.
So just throw away whatever is on the site already.
Oh, yeah.
And just think about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the explanation.
It's a pretty important concept, because there's no requirement to create any new units. It's the only requirement to have the zoning.
But it creates the opportunity to allow for it.
That's why it's very important for the town to do some serious planning on where this zone is going to be and what is already on that zone.
And so to that end, in the picture that was, Celia, could you go back to the previous slide? So 50% or 25 acres could be outside of this. Does it have to be contiguous for the guidelines at this point?
So this circle represents 750 acres, so that's what a half a mile is. So only 25 acres, well, let's, let's back up. Only 50% of the zone has to be in that 750 acres. The other, the other half, or less than half, you could have 30 acres in a half a mile and 20 acres somewhere else, that has to have at least five contiguous acres. So you could have those five, you could have four separate five contiguous acres spread around town if you wanted, or you could consolidate it into one, or you could have all 50 acres in this half a mile.
Other questions? Alan?
A couple. So knowing that the zones we create could already have development on them, commercial, residential, or other, is the 15 units per acre consistent across the acreage, or is that the average?
That's the average. So you could zone 10 units per acre in one portion of the district, but you would have to balance it out with 20 units per acre, or, you know, some type of, so that the total, you know, that you could have five units per acre in one part of the zone and 100 units per acre in the other part, as long as it averaged out to 15 units per acre.
And each chunk has to be five acre, there's a five acre minimum per chunk.
Right.
So you can't cherry pick properties.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, so everyone has to realize, the final guidelines are not out, right? So this is all based upon current, you know, draft guidelines, current interpretations, current webinars. A lot of the public comments that were submitted are going to be responded to in the final guidelines, so we may get some clarification on, for example, does contiguous mean that it can't be broken up by streets? Right? Like, you know, does that mean, you know, this lot that the town haul on is not contiguous with the lot across West Main Street? Or is it? Like, you know, that's, that's something that needs, we need clarification on, because otherwise, you're really going to be talking about bigger lots, and that may be challenging for certainly many towns in the Commonwealth.
I just want to comment a little bit, little bit further. One of our comments that we submitted to the state was to get at this five acre requirement. We mentioned that we didn't want an area or a neighborhood in town to be identified as the multifamily neighborhood. We wanted it to fit appropriately within existing neighborhoods. We wanted more flexibility, so we questioned the five acre.
Correct. Sean?
So I see here it says we need capacity for 1,250 units. If we're applying 50 acres, isn't that 25 units per acre?
Well, yes, if you limit it to 50 acres, but the 50 acres at 15 units per acre is 750 units. Every town that's affected by this has to have at least 750 units, regardless of whether they only have 2,000 current households. For, there's a tiered system, so for commuter rail communities like us, it goes further than just 750. The threshold is 15% of our household, number of households, which would be the 1,250. For towns like Newton that have MBTA, it goes even higher.
Okay, so just to help answer that question a little bit further, so the, it's more, it's, it's, would likely be more acreage, to me, you know, to get to that 1,250 above the 50, or you'd have to increase the density on that 50 to comply.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the.
15 units per acre you'd have to go.
But. So that question's more part of the solution, which we don't have yet.
We have not.
So I don't want to get too bogged down into, well, how are we going to fix this? Because we, you know, we're just getting our feet wet on this whole process.
Gotcha. So it's really a minimum of 50 acres, and then you get us to 1,250 units.
You can zone the whole town if you want, but it's, it's probably overkill, so.
Right. No, no, but I'm saying 1,250 units is a lot tougher than, you know.
Than 750, it is, yeah.
And I guess it's important to note that in Westboro, we do have areas where existing housing density is well above 15 units per acre. There's apartment building across, almost across the street from here. I think.
It's actually 52 units per acre.
It's 52 units per acre, but it's built and designed in a way that it fits in, it's aesthetically pleasing, it fits with the character of the downtown, and it's been an asset, so, you know, not.
Well, in that respect, Alan, we have Fountainhead that's arrived now, that's probably 100 units an acre, at least, right? The question is whether.
Is that five acres? No.
No, I, I think it is. I've looked at that, trust me. But the question is, you know, whether that's a loophole to just avoid doing this altogether, or whether DHCD is going to put some type of guideline in that.
I guess that'll be interesting to see, because, I mean, obviously, the goal at the state level is to improve the housing stock, or increase the housing stock in a way that's, you know, higher density is usually smaller units, they're for more moderate cost, to meet the housing shortage, right, which alleviates a number of issues around housing affordability and affordability of the state, as well as supporting ongoing economic development. You know, the, in the back of the mind, though, you know, 1,250 unit, net new units, each potentially with one-plus children, would be a significant increase in our school population, well over 25%. And of course, that generates costs and burden to the taxpayer, not just for schools, but DPW, police, fire, town administration. I mean, it has broader impact. And so I think one of the challenges will be as, I know we can't really make any decisions at this point until the guidance is finalized, but, you know, sort of the balance of, you know, the long-term potential versus the, you know, and the desire of the program and the compliance with sort of the overall fiscal health and size and manageability of the town.
So you've brought, if I could, you've brought us back right to the beginning again, which is where we want it to be, so that people understand that even if we create the zoning to comply with the requirements, if we don't have the ability to deliver water and sewer, these will never come to fruition. Because all we're doing is creating the zoning, we're not creating the capacity, all right? So if we don't have the water and sewer, like the communities I talked about during the presentation, in the rural areas, they'll never be able to build septic large enough to handle that kind of density. So either they'll someday provide municipal sewer, or they won't build a housing.
I have a couple of questions. Just to clarify, pardon the slow one here, but this is, this is a requirement for, to basically have the zoning by 20, end of 2024.
Correct.
If we want to qualify for the state grants, you talk about MassWorks, those other things.
And in the interim, we remain eligible.
Remain eligible. I agree with you, of course, if you want to.
As long as we get this hearing done and submit a letter to them by May 2nd.
Exactly.
If we don't submit a letter to them by May 2nd, we will not be eligible for that.
No, I think just so that, again, a lot of this is education for us, but also for the public to know, you know, and I think, thank you for putting it out there with the MassWorks grants we've received, the ones we're talking about for the Otis Street Corridor, which are very important, and again, save the town and the taxpayers money. Another question I had, I may have missed this, was anything, there's no restrictions on affordability? So I guess my question is, we want to, part of this of keeping out of 40B is, we can put affordable or restrictions on these properties as well, so they are developed.
They haven't given specifics on that, Ian, but the, basically, their frequently asked questions say that you must, you can put reasonable restrictions on it. So they haven't really defined reasonable, but for example, you could put, you could require commercial components to the, to the multifamily zone. You can, can have an affordability requirement.
So we can put a 20% affordability requirement.
My guess is that reasonable means that we can't say it has to be 100% affordable, because it's not, that would effectively stifle the development.
Perfect. Thanks. Other questions? Shelby, sound like you had.
Well, I guess I'm cynical and speculating that, so I understand this is not a production mandate or anything, but isn't it reasonable to assume that once these guidelines are, you know, kind of fully established and. and communities are working toward the process and getting to that 2024 deadline, that the legislation could be amended to then require production as a result of all this pre-work?
Well, right now, it only addresses zoning, so when you say require production, I mean, we can't make somebody come in and build something.
I think that would be, if I may, I think that would be a pretty big, there would be loud cries at the State House if there was a mandate on production to meet this. I mean, that, there are communities, when we listen to this call, this webinar, there were communities that were really struggling to figure out how they could make this happen, they were far more rural.
I'm sure.
You know, so I will just mention one of the data points that came in that, for all, the state announced that we have a 200,000 unit shortfall across the state, and that's the reason why they put this program in place.
This is intended to clear the way for proposed developments from the private sector.
Right. Right.
So just to be clear, we're so early in this process. One of the things a working group is going to do is put together a plan to get some public input on this, to get your input, to get all stakeholders' input on this, get this out there, come up with a solution, maybe get some outside. We're certainly, we've already asked CMRPC for some technical support on this, and we're looking at some other funding sources for technical support. So, you know, we're really very early into any potential solution, but we've got some good heads behind it, and we're certainly going to keep you involved with that solution.
I think that's a great thing, Mark, I think that makes sense, there's a lot of work to do, you're at the beginning stages, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it's so early, I mean, if they had the final guidelines out, I'd feel a little more informed, and, you know, I come off like I know what I'm talking about, but they could put out the guidelines and completely change my perspective.
But I trust all of us on the two boards here are, absolutely understand, Shelby, where you're coming from, and that's why a lot of work needs to happen here, and glad we have the time. I'm also glad that the timeline you had of March of 2024 town meeting, because even if we're not ready with that, we know that we have October of 2024 to get something in place to still meet that deadline. So shooting for March of 2024 makes sense, and it gives us the buffer if it, you know.
And with over 100 communities submitting comments, I suspect that that June deadline for them promulgating regulations will probably be pushed out. The regulations themselves were pushed out when they began this whole legislation passage. So I wouldn't be surprised if that deadline isn't pushed somewhere into '24, I'm sorry, into '25.
Twenty-five, makes sense.
The Mass Municipal Association and the Mass Lawyers Association wrote a joint letter asking that all of the timelines be extended as well, so whatever legs that has.
I mean, I think, I think until one puts a stake in the ground, right, then everyone kind of goes, yeah, I know we have to do this. This is extremely important work, I'm so thankful for the committee that's been assembled, and I think it's essential work. I do think that, and appreciate, you know, Mark, you're tempering my blood pressure right now. But I, and I think it's, I think it will, I think it will really force, you know, thoughtful conversations within the community about something I know I hear all the time about, we need more housing and housing of X, Y, and Z type and affordability. So it's going to force that conversation, but we can do it in a, you know, thoughtful way, which I think is great.
Cela?
Can you put back up the slide with the timeline on it for a second? So I just want to make sure, you know, these working group meetings right in the middle of the slide, right? So that's, that's where we're really going to be doing a lot of them, you know, the work once we've got those guidelines to really understand what they are, and I fully expect, I think, to Mark's point is that we would be very interactive with the community on kind of what the thinking is and what the opportunity is, because if we do this right, there really is, I think, a good opportunity for the town. So I'm glad we have the time here, hopefully we do a little, little.
Could we, could we just make-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, could we just make sure this presentation is available either through the planning board or wherever? Because I know the committee doesn't, okay, but the committee doesn't have a webpage yet, which I understand, but if it could be-
I put it on both sides.
We have a spot for the, on the planning board webpage.
All right, perfect, so it'd be on the planning board, great.
I would put it out on ours, too, I mean, let's get it out there.
Wherever it needs to be, I just, I think it's-
For both important people.
Well, we can put it on the main page.
For a short time, then.
Not my call.
It's not my call.
Not my call either.
Well, you're the chair, why isn't it?
You're the chair, too, come on. Speaking of that, anything from your board, any questions, comments? Hazel?
I just have one question.
Actually, could you? Sorry.
Sorry. For clarification, this requirement is only for new housing, not for existing, and you get no credit for existing housing.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with what's on the site already.
Right. But you, but Jim commented that the density which we have at Westboro Village is 14 per acre, and they're looking at 15 on this. If it got dropped to 14, would that be no credit? So I just want to make it clear to people that it's new housing, it's not what's already on the site.
Well, I guess just a question, though, I mean, this is a zoning-
That's really what I'm-
This is a zoning question, if we change the zoning to that district to be-
Westboro Village is only 12 units per acre, right?
The zoning is for 14.
The zoning allows for 14, but we have all sorts of, I mean, we got the lead property, Veterans Freedom Park, in exchange for a density bonus to get what was originally 14, then reduced down to 12. So we may, we're talking about-
To the microphone, just so people-
We're talking about solutions, right? And it's a little early, but, you know, certainly the group has discussed, well, what if we take the 27 acres that Westboro Village is on and zone that at 15 units per acre? Well, are we going to get any more units out of that? No, but we've all of a sudden gotten to 350, or whatever that math is, of the 1,250 units.
By our zoning rules.
Just by the zoning, yeah.
Just, just because, you know, even though, I guess in theory, Westboro Village could then choose to build three more units per acre by right, is that going to happen? We hope not, right?
Well, we haven't done that yet either, so, yeah.
One of the questions I have in looking at the map up there, which we haven't addressed yet, because we really haven't gotten into the real discussions of what we could do here, is 20% of that half-mile radius is water. So is there a special accommodation that we might get on our number in that area? I don't know, right? I mean, that's kind of a unique situation when, actually, probably 30% is water.
Yeah, so I think that-
These are questions that we, you know, might come up.
One of the real things we need clarification on is that contiguous acres? Because we really don't want to include big lots, right? Like, we don't want another 300-unit project all at once. So we'd be better off including small lots where the impact was gradual, if there was any impact. So I think that's certainly one strategy we've discussed. Again, we're so early, there's-
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mark, on that one, it's, we could be here all night talking, I think it's early, so. Anything else, planning board-wise? I've gotten that twice in your pizza, that's good. Anything else from the select board? I just want to say thank you again to the committee, this, a lot of work, very informative, and much more to come here, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ian, can I just interject? I'll make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting. All those in favor?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We always enjoy joint meetings, so. Okay. Patrick, thank you for your work on that committee, it's important, as we heard, but-
Thank you.
Sure. A lot of work, too.
Enjoyed it.
Very nice.
Are you still on it, so?
I was going to say, yeah.
You're not done.
Yeah, come on.
Quarter of the way through.
Okay, next on our agenda, item eight is an item related to 187 Turnpike Road, better known as the Green Thumb Property. Kristi?
So the board received a letter about a month ago from Boston Lawn Mower, sort of giving the board an update related to the legislation that had gone through in 2020 that the board had supported, citing some concern about how that legislation was not specific to Boston Lawn Mower. And so what that legislation did was it allowed the agricultural restriction to be lifted on a portion of the property. And so John, our chief assessor, John Steinberg, our chief assessor, is here, he's done a lot of sort of work in keeping up with what's going on in the property. I'll just say that, you know, at this time, I don't really think there's any action for the board to take, but in terms of the board and the community sort of understanding where we're at, I think John's just going to give us some background.
Perfect. Ian, if you can remind me, I know I signed the letter on behalf of the board, but kind of, so everyone understands the role the town played in this versus what others played.
Sure, sure. John Steinberg, chief assessor. I'll start at the beginning, is that this land was sold to the McGoldrick family at a discount in exchange for an agricultural restriction in perpetuity. And this agricultural restriction was passed through legislation and put on the deed as a lien with no option for any sort of removal of that. So the McGoldrick family got to the point where I think they wanted to sell the property, they petitioned the legislature to create an option to buy out the restriction, which was the legislation that was passed in 2018, which gave them a formula to have the property appraised, both as an agricultural use, a commercial use, the buyout would be the net between the two. At that time, it was for the entire property as a whole, which is somewhat financially unfeasible when you got into the whole cost of it, unless the McGoldricks took, you know, a very small amount in exchange for it. Otherwise, it'd be difficult to develop a business there for what the cost of the land might be, if the McGoldricks wanted to get a good return on their property. So fast forward to 2020, Boston Lawn Mower was looking to relocate and was working with the McGoldrick family to rewrite the legislation where they would just buy out a portion of it, at which point they came to the town to support their change in the legislation to create a change in the lien that would allow for part of it to remain restricted and part of it to be converted to commercial use. And one of the pitches of Boston Lawn Mower was that they could tie it in with the agricultural use so that part of the property was done in both ways. That deal fell apart, and then the property was recently sold to the McGovern Auto Group, at which point in time, nothing had changed with the restriction. The agricultural restriction is still on the property, nothing can be done other than agricultural use. And so at that point, I contacted DCAM to see if they had heard anything about that, and they had not. They were contacted early in 2021 from a group looking to put this deal together and utilize the appraisal that had been attempted to use prior to that, dealing with the Boston Lawn Mower, and that, you know, DCAM said no. The arrangement is, is that in order for it to be removed, DCAM engages an independent appraiser, who would then appraise it based upon the two uses, okay? At that point in time, that appraisal would be reviewed by DCAM and submitted to the inspector general's office. After review from the inspector general, who would then write up a report, give it back to DCAM, the commissioner of DCAM would then submit it to the House and Senate committees. Kristi and I were on a call earlier today with Hannah Kane, Representative Hannah Kane, and she clarified that there's no further action on behalf of the legislature. These types of reports are not uncommon. In other words, if the commissioner could come, arrangements could be made for this buyout, they would simply modify the deed restriction, okay, and it would be recorded at the registry of deeds or be removed through the registry of deeds. There's no further action by the legislature. You know, ultimately, you know, looking at this property, it would be great to return it to the tax rolls. In the same way, we talk about the movie theater, it would be excellent for this to be returned to the tax rolls at a reasonable rate. It would be bound by whatever the current zoning is, including open space, whatever could be an allowed use, if the deed restriction was purchased, bought out, so to speak.
So where we're at right now is that the property has been transferred, but the deed restriction is still fully in place. And then, as John said, if it's lifted, when it's lifted, the underlying zoning would dictate what can go there.
So just, so I understand here, so the legislation passed, but if I understand it correctly, it passed with that requirement for the formula, the appraisal, what you just talked about. So while the McGovern Group, whatever, has purchased the property now, they can't do anything with that property until that process goes through? If whatever the determination is for cost to do that, they would have to agree?
It would be above and beyond the 2.5 million they paid for the property.
They would have to pay that in order, to the state, in order to develop anything on it. And then at that point, whatever happened, how it was recorded as a deed, they could develop, but then it would go through zoning. Is that correct?
Correct. Everything would be, have to be permitted properly, go through zoning, but it wouldn't happen until after. The commissioner of DCAM gave it the blessing, the deal was done, they paid DCAM, and then they would record something, removing or modifying the lien. If they only bought out a portion of the property, and if they bought out the entire thing, it would be appraised as the entire property. If they bought out a portion of it, the lien would be modified, but there would remain a partial restriction on the property.
Okay. And so I just, one final question, the modification to the legislation that we support or whatever, is, here, that never went through the-
No, that did, that passed in 2020. Which is what gave Boston Lawn Mower the process to go forward.
With the negotiation up court.
Unfortunately, when the appraisal came back, they couldn't make the finances work in a timely fashion, at which point, you know, their time had expired, and the McGoldrick family said, we're not giving you an extension any further. I think they were far apart. They didn't like the numbers that came back from the appraisal, and so they were really far apart as to what they would have to pay the state above and beyond versus what the family wanted them to pay them.
Okay, so the McGovern Group who owns it now, or a future owner, if I understand it correctly, can do it in basically a couple of ways. One, they can try to purchase the whole property, remove it completely, or purchase a portion, leave a portion of it agricultural, and figure out the appraisal, and then they would be able to develop that piece where the restriction was-
Correct. DCAM has reached out to them now, and has started the conversation. I don't know that it's gone very far, in fact, it hasn't gone very far. But they've notified, DCAM has notified them that they can't use the property for anything else.
Perfect.
I guess, my question is, when we sent the letter of support, it was about a specific project and a specific use? And my impression at the time is that the change in legislation would reflect that, if it could, but it didn't. Was, is there any sense that the legislation was submitted for any potential project as opposed to the one talked to in a way that would anyway have been bad faith, as far as the support of the town?
So our, so in talking to our representatives, there was never an intention to make this legislation for one particular user? And that's also true with, you know, Craig Blazes, who came before us from Worcester Business, I keep forgetting his name.
About Worcester Business.
Worcester Business Development, thank you. And, you know, they do this work all the time, and that, my understanding is that that was never a part of the discussion, that it was focused on this particular project. So the town gave support for the project. If you read the letter, you know, part of that support was because it was still going to, that it was good for the town to retain some agricultural use and to have some commercial use, so therefore more tax dollars. They, you know, I understand, I think that, I know that the select board did support the particular project, but the idea is that a portion of it was going to be held as agricultural and- but the idea is that a portion of it was going to be held as agricultural and a portion not.
And still to the end that we couldn't negotiate. I mean, we weren't in the, we're not a middleman here, it was a negotiation. It had to be agreed based on dollars of what.
Right, and bear in mind, there was already a process to remove the restriction in its entirety.
Right.
So if a company like McGovern Auto Group came forward and they just said, we want to remove the entire restriction, there was no place for, there was no need to change anything. That happened in 2018.
And I don't, sorry, I don't believe that we, I don't believe that this board supported, or even took up that 2018 legislation.
I never remember it coming to us at all.
Yeah, so that happened without us even knowing. So I guess the point there is that even without our, without our letter of support, they could have moved forward with the 2020 legislation.
Other questions or? I don't think there's anything, this is, this is great. I mean, this actually clarified a lot of things for me, but I think it's is what it is. Thank you. Okay, we already did Article 9 with the approval of minutes, so now 231 Turnpike Road, Request for Proposals. Again, this is, as everyone will know it now, former Regal Cinema, or people will know that that's what 231 Turnpike Road is. Kristi?
So I did, I did, there's a a draft in your packet, and then I also had forwarded you one that had been reviewed by Town Council.
When did you send? Is that the one with your comments on it?
Yesterday. So I can go through and just give you the responses to my comments, or to the, from Town Council.
Based on what's in our packet?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Sure. Let me just make sure I have that. Sorry. Okay, so the first question that had been asked was about the trail easements. We talked about there could be potential trail easements, and so there was language added further down in the RFP, just generally saying that the town may reserve easements for trail purposes, just so that they're aware. We'll continue to work on exactly what that is. There was a question about timing. I had asked about, you know, what best practice might be. We do have to advertise in the central register for a certain amount of time. Her response was that they recommend 60 days. And so that's, you know, we'll consider that when we update the dates once we finalize the RFP. Shelby had raised a question about the deposit going from 7% to 10%. We can, we can do sort of whatever the town's interested in doing. So in the most recent version that I had sent you, it changed to the 10%. So we can discuss it, or we can just keep it at 10. When we talked about the sort of the state of the building, we talked about whether or not the utilities, we need to have exact dates because we know that it was turned off, we believe, in 2021. So, you know, we can sort of generally state that, so it's fine the way it's written. There's some additional comments about the outside area by the Assistant DBL Director that was updated. There was a question, Shelby had asked at the last meeting about how someone might get in touch with the owners of the abutting property who are also party to that reciprocal agreement. I did speak with them and they were fine with us providing email addresses. So assurance noted where that should go in the, in the document. There was a question at the last meeting about having them include a proposed timeline. And so under readiness to proceed, there's a request to include a proposed development schedule.
And it's non-binding?
Right. Right. Proposals are to include their, yeah, development schedule from the time they enter into a PNS.
What section is that, please, Kristi?
It's in six, but it's in the most recent.
Okay.
Draft, yeah. There's a question about who the selection committee would be, whether or not we would put together a committee or if it would be the full board. So that's something that we should discuss. Because right now, it just says the committee related to who's going to decide where to award the bid. When we went through this process previously, it was the board. So we could assume that that's what we would do.
So it would be the full board?
Yeah.
That's why we get paid the big bucks. Tell you later.
There, there's been some questions about whether or not we want to set a minimum bid. So you'll just have to sort of decide if that's something that the board is interested in doing. You know, there's there's benefits because then you're sort of showing what you're expecting, but then there's risks that someone might just bid sort of closer to the minimum bid.
Are you looking for comments back on these? I
Can we, let's go through the whole thing and then come back to it. So make notes of what, I think, sorry, I should have said that upfront, I apologize.
There was also a question about the determination of the fair market value. You know, certainly, we looked to our Chief Assessor for helping us determine value. It's also possible that we could ask some local commercial real estate, or commercial realtors, if they would be willing to give us an idea, just to give, sort of set expectations. Shelby provided a possible criteria or evaluative criteria around community benefit. One of the questions that I had was what part of that proposal included the taxable value of the building and personal property, which is captured in a different section. So it's, when you talk about it, you would be considering what's in your packet minus that last sentence in the first part that says community benefit is equally understood to be taxable value because you're evaluating it in a different section. And then the one underneath it was just about, was really about complementing other businesses. So there's a risk there, other businesses in that area. And so that's really up to the board as a possible criteria or not. There was a question about the requirement for permits. And so that's really, that was that first question that I had asked all of you if you wanted to sort of put in place some level of comfort that they're going to be ready to proceed as soon as they purchase the building and it's not going to continue to sit vacant. And that, that's really all the comments that were in there. So there's, so I think for discussion, it's whether or not the board wants to set a minimum bid. And then I think those two comparative criteria. Sounds like I already heard that this board would be the selection committee, which is what I assumed.
I guess a question, just that last piece about permitting, whatever, just if there's any comments on that.
Okay, so you had already had that discussion, but if you want to have it again? You could.
Did we have though, specifically how you wrote it, or is it, I mean, I think I'm fine with that, but.
No, we just talked about whether or not you wanted some assurances that they were, people, that they would be ready to proceed, and that was what was included to, for that piece. So if you want to modify that language, you could.
Ian, could we just kind of take it from the top of the items and just check them off? Make sure we're all on the same page?
I think it's a great idea. So the first one is a minimum bid, then?
I thought the first one was the deposit.
I'm comfortable with 10%. 10%.
Okay.
It's not unreasonable. Yep.
Seven, 10.
Okay.
I was going to say 9.762, but 10% is good.
For sure. Pie times.
Pie.
Okay, all right.
So let's go with 10%. I think we're all in agreement with 10%, it's fine.
All right. Now to minimum bid, sorry.
I, given that we have the right not to act on any bid, I prefer not to list a minimum bid. It sets, I worry that would set a target. If people think that, well, you know, they're going to judge not only the value of the property and the project, but they have to look at their bid in a competitive stance. And if they expect that everyone's going to be thinking about that minimum bid and how close can they get to it and still win, I think across the board, we could end up having lower bids. I'd rather let them stretch the envelope as far as how much they're willing to pay for the property and see it as more competitive.
And again, I would agree with that.
If it comes in low, and we can say, well, nope, sorry.
We can go back and say no, and then go back and set a minimum bid if we think we need to, because we're not getting.
Yes, and I agree, I think we've already stated that it's highly advantageous to give a price over fair market value. And I, we'll be telling them what we believe that is, correct? We'll be telling.
No, sorry, if you set a bid, if you set a minimum bid.
No, but I'm saying they'll know what we believe fair market value of the property is, right?
No.
It's not, it's what, oh, okay.
We as a selection committee will get advice on what fair market value is so we can do the evaluation, but it won't be part of the RFP.
They'd be able to see the town's appraisal, the evaluation on the property, though.
All right. No, but I, but I'm, I agree with not putting in a minimum bid. What do you think, Patrick?
I, I agree. For all the reasons Alan listed, I think, why make that data point? You know, I think it opens it up a little bit more and provides some more flexibility. And to his point, it's exactly what I was going to say, is we can always reject it and go back out again if necessary.
Shelby, you okay with that, or?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. So next.
And then we move to the evaluation criteria.
Okay. On community benefit.
Right. So the way that this is written, it would give preference to uses that are entertainment, recreation, or other activities.
I'll go first. As much as I like the idea of having that type of use at that at that location, I don't think we should be stipulating any and restricting the use in a way that could discourage developers who've got creative plans that we're not anticipating that could even be a better use for that property. I think it could deter some bidders who aren't thinking purely recreation or entertainment or have other ideas, and I'd want to see what those proposals were. And not have it count against them that it doesn't fit within a specific category of use. And I guess the similar comment goes to community benefit with the other butters. If we say that we're looking for something that enhances or complements the businesses in that plaza, we're really doing that based on a snapshot in time. And that plaza has had not a typical turnover of businesses over time. So, you know, now I believe there's still Salon Academy there. At one point, there was an ethnic food market that was there. And so if we look and give any advantage to someone who's going to complement the current businesses, we're not really reflective of the fact that the nature of the other businesses on the abutting properties are likely to change over time. And again, it's, you know, I have trouble with us sort of picking winners and losers as far as, you know, the benefit, whether it's specific use or to other specific businesses. We did get guidance or a letter from the Planning Board that was looking for a couple of things. So I'd rather see something where it was advantageous if the evaluators deem it to be in line with uses defined in the master plan and would be unlikely to compete with or detract from the town's historic downtown business district, which is specifically small commercial enterprise, which is, again, consistent with the master plan and a less, and a least, or a less favorable rating if the proposal does not align with the master plan's identified uses. I mean, I think the existing abutting property owners, because of the inter-property agreement, will have some say and influence in how things evolve with whoever buys the property. So they have an opportunity to protect and manage their interest. We, I don't think we need to get involved with that. I'd like to keep our focus with the master plan and, you know, if, if there's a concern about counteracting the work we're doing in the downtown business district, something very general along those lines is a possibility.
I actually completely agree with you. I think we've talked before, but it's, one is we asked the Planning Board for their help, but two is we think about community benefit. We're kind of talking about it among ourselves, but we already went through a a very public master plan process over a number of years that, that came up with kind of criteria or evaluative measures. So I appreciate the Planning Board putting in. I think we should take advantage of it. They suggested it, makes sense to me. We're not deviating from that. We use the language and that, that makes it look like a master plan, which is what we want to adhere to, what the town's kind of asked us to adhere to as well. So I, I personally agree with with Alan's comments.
Wait, I'm sorry, so is that a new?
I think it's removing what we have in there right now for six and seven and using what the Planning Board provided to us and creating a new number six, a new number six.
And what would that be?
Say it again.
Is that the number, number three in their letter?
It's actually, I believe, number one related. I have to scroll down to their letter, hold on.
The letter's in our package, too.
Yeah, I gotta go. It's easier to go to the next agenda and then back up.
I know. So number one talks about adding to the commercial tax base. Number two is repurposing to not draw local business traffic away from downtown.
And three is consistent with the master plan. So I, I would say the new number six would be it's advantageous if it's consistent with the master plan. Less, least advantageous if it does not. You know, they're also saying that it's in, you know, our business district zoning BA so that part of that consistency would be within current zoning, which is, I believe, mentioned earlier as well. I think the issue that they set as far as maximum value to the taxpayer, we've covered that
Yep.
already. And we could discuss if, you know, we want something, I included it in my suggestion, reflecting their request about not competing with uses encouraged in our downtown business district. And I was a little more gent, you know. But you can argue that the same thing that I'm saying, well, we shouldn't have anything specific to the butters, we shouldn't have anything specific to other business districts as well. And I'm comfortable with that. But I do think alignment with the master plan would, I would see that as advantageous. And that would simply, you know, have the proposals consider, if nothing else, they're going to read that section of the master plan.
Correct.
And that logic is sound, because, you know, it's consistent with what we wrote and the sustainability with making it in alignment with the Westboro's Climate Action Plan, right? So it's consistent in that way.
So then would the new number six, would that then just have two sort of an advantageous and a least favorable and not a
I think so.
highly advantageous?
Yeah.
I think so, because it's an either or.
Okay.
And then I have one other comment on these, which goes to item four from the Planning Board level with, letter, which effectively encouraging us to look at whether or not we should demo, demolish the existing building before we do it. I know.
Do you want to finish talking about criteria?
Yeah, let's go to criteria.
Well, this goes to a criteria, and the question is, do we want a criteria that states if the proposal does not include reuse of the current structure, that it would be advantageous to see a plan for relatively quick removal of the structure? So that.
We've already asked for a proposed timeline.
Okay.
And you would also, before completing the PNS, you would get, they would have all their permits, which would include a demo.
Okay, okay, so that would be redundant.
And I don't know if that would then be giving them an out to just demo the building and then, you know.
I like the other ones we have, exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Heard from Patrick, myself, Sean, Shelby, anything on?
So on, so I think no question, we all want, you know, tax revenue back on, on the books as the priority. I'm okay with some language around, you know, advantageous being consistent with our master plan, I think that makes sense. I'm, I'm not, and I, and I should know this, I apologize, I don't. My hesitation is if that master. I'm not comfortable with, you know, kind of this whole idea of if something else were there, it draws people away from the downtown area. I think Westboro is Westboro and wherever people can, you know, potentially seek entertainment and enjoy, then they should and that benefits the community as a whole. So that would be my, yeah, that would be my only concern with that, but at the same time, we put a lot of effort and time and resources into the master plan and we have adopted and accepted it, so I'm fine, I'm fine with that language.
I think that was your proposal, too, as I.
Yeah, yeah.
Piece about downtown, just accepting the master plan language, advantageous or.
I'm comfortable with not having the downtown piece in it, I wanted to reflect it because it was a request from the planning board. And so that we discuss it.
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to ask, so for advantageous for this, the master plan alignment would be, I would think it would just be number, number three of this, just the first two sentences.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, so can I just ask about the being that we just heard about housing choice and I know that zoning, it's not proposing production, but. You know, again, we're not, the purpose of tonight is not to envision what could be, that's let, let free market dictate that, but. If someone came in with a mixed use proposal.
If someone.
I don't, I don't know that we would, I mean, I, I don't know, but and it was the right number and everything else, who's to say that that wouldn't be a great proposal for that, that project for that area?
So if someone came in with a mixed use proposal today, one, I'm not sure it would comply with zoning, and secondly, they couldn't build because we don't have wastewater allocation for multifamily housing. And it would be, I think it would be an issue if we were to award the bid to someone who actually wouldn't be able to build their proposal. Because of the wastewater allocation.
So there.
You can't. I, I guess you could put housing there, but no one can flush their toilets or use their sinks, right?
Well, no, I.
Septic system.
Right.
And would it have an ability?
Right, you're, you're, you're surrounded by wetlands, I don't know.
Yeah, I.
Well, I think whether or not they could move forward with multifamily housing, if you're, if, because there's these restrictions around it based on the wastewater capacity, you might not want to make it an advantageous thing, but definitely, but maybe not.
I think we don't speak to it, is what I'm saying.
Right, right.
I don't, I mean, I think anyone proposing needs to do their homework with what can be built there and whether or not it makes sense for them to do that. So that, that would be, I'm just following up on, I think, consistent with the master plan, you know, I think that first sentence is, is appropriate, you know, that would be advantageous, right? That's what we're saying. Number three from the planning board letter would be the new number six.
And you're okay with removing six and seven?
The current.
The current six and seven that were in there.
Uh, yes, sorry.
Placing six with the.
I know, sorry, it's like scroll up, scroll down.
So basically, the community benefit, we're replacing both six and seven and just making the community benefit six be the master plan.
Correct, yes, thank you.
We're all agreeing with that? Okay. We're all agreeing with that.
Wait, wait, Shelby?
No, no.
Just, just one comment, I, I think I, you know, I'd like to hear what sort of town council says that the master plan seems a little squishy to me, you know, I'm guessing they'll have some comments regarding that, but I'm okay with us, you know, taking a stab at it, it just seems nebulous to the point where we could make a case that they are either hitting it or not hitting it and.
That's the plan.
I think, well, I think that's.
It would be specific to the uses, so, so consistent with master plan, potential new uses should include commercial, potentially light industrial and research and development.
Okay, so that would be the.
That's what we were just saying, that first sentence, I think.
Okay.
But you're right, that is a big document, so I think having those sort of specifics pulled out is.
Okay.
Can we just talk about the permits in place piece, I guess.
So are we okay with this?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, now, Sean, you're okay?
Yeah.
So you got what you need for that, okay. Yes.
So the logic, so I'm just trying to think of from a. The idea of allowing for all the permits to be in place before we close on this.
I'm struggling with that a little bit, too.
And I'm just thinking about other transactions.
Not really realistic.
Well, just think about the process that, you know, we're part of site plan, we're part of this, and then it goes to the planning board and, and don't we want to kind of close? But at the same time, I think, Chris, to your point, it's like, we want to know that the project can go forward and that, because that benefits everyone.
Yeah, I guess I was a little bit surprised that, and I'm kind of new to this process, so that we would require the permitting done before the closure, because as we just saw on one of the presentations tonight, they spent $38,000 on a site, you know, on their site plan permit process. We're saying we need, we're expecting them to go through that process before we close with them. Does that sound like the right order of events?
I mean, based on.
It's an incentive.
Personal experience in commercial properties, which is very small compared to this, that's, that's very different to me. Like, you, you understand the risk going into it, you do your due diligence, you close on the property, and then you go forward and you get your permits.
But in this case, we've accepted. We've signed the PNS. We just won't close. So we've basically awarded it, signed the PNS, and we're saying we won't go to closing though until you have permits. So we've agreed, this is what we like, you presented to us a timeline, you presented to us a plan. And all you do is get permits, yeah, you're going to pay some money, but we've agreed that we're selling the property, we just won't close until.
If you think about the, if you think about the MGB project.
Please, let's not.
I'm, I'm just thinking that. It, it makes sense that you would want to make, that the, whatever the proposed use is could fully function there, at whatever, at, at Regal or at that location, before you would close on the property and then they would own a piece of land that they potentially couldn't move forward with.
And the other consideration when I thought about this was the overall timing. This. If. If we finalize this RFP at our next meeting and the recommendation is 60 days advertising in the register and there's other marketing efforts to get as many bidders as possible, bidding process. We could be, you know, we would be opening the sealed envelope sometime early fall or mid-fall, right? So. September, October, potentially. Or sooner, right, sooner, right? So then the permitting process, right, so then we have the.
Out by the, by the beginning of May, right?
Right, so we.
Soon as it's ready.
Right, so.
Did you stop talking?
Okay, so.
Not you, us.
Wasn't that part of our offsite?
But my point was, excuse me, to be very, to be succinct, to be succinct.
So say what you're saying.
They start the permitting process, we have the January 6th redemption period as well.
Well, that's why.
We'll allow them to permit and time the closing.
Yes.
Post redemption period for financing.
So John's not coming up, but he just sent me a message that this is very typical of all of the commercial transactions that, that come before you.
Come before us. Mr. Chief Assessor.
John Steinberg, Chief Assessor. Yeah, it's not uncommon for things to be under contract and pending closing for permits to be in place, 2529 has not closed, 4400 didn't close until permits were in place. However, those are much more typical transactions than this one. One of the things you have to consider is if you wait till permits are in place and permits fall apart, then your deal files are, and you allow for that. So there's a fine line between if the permit's not getting in place because of their fault, you're offering them sort of some leeway there, so.
Well, and to your point, so if it, right.
Yeah, so otherwise.
But we could, but we could put something into the PNS that if they fail to move forward in proper fashion, that there's an expiration on the PNS as well, right?
Right, I mean, this, this gives a timeline that closing won't happen later than January 30th of 2023.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with this education, I like that language, that does exactly what we asked to be done, which was to protect us that we don't have some of the buyers and that vacant building sits there for. 10 more years.
So let me ask this, then, so if they. We sign the PNS with them and then something happens and they're like, geez, I really am not prepared to move forward or whatever, I'm just not going to get permits. And then it essentially gives them an out to get out of the deal without having to, without losing any money.
Except the deposit.
The deposit.
They would lose the deposit, even though.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, they would, that's what I want to confirm, they would still lose the deposit.
Make it 15%.
Okay.
Depends how the PNS is.
Well, I would say that, yes, I mean, we, that's a great point, if they fail to move forward and seek permits in a reasonable time or maybe there's some, you know, or maybe it's that January.
Right, so it's a, sorry, so it says the deposit submitted by the buyer shall be held in escrow by the town treasurer in a non-interest bearing account and shall be duly accounted for, in the event that the buyer fails to fulfill its obligations per, to purchase the premise, premises, the town shall retain the deposit as liquidated damages.
And so it doesn't mention permits at all, right?
Yeah, so they complete it, we retain it. That's a good, we get it done, it's 10%.
$25 million.
At one point, Chris, I think in my email to you, I had asked about the timeline, which is Alan used, I'd almost forgotten, but because of your comments. So where is that and can we discuss that just for a minute?
Well, it's not in there because we don't know what the dates are.
Well, no, but, right, I know we don't know the dates, but I think.
Going under ability to proceed, right?
No, you're, she's, you're asking about the RFP schedule, right?
Thank you.
It's on page five.
Okay, way up. Well, I just, I, I guess I was wondering, when I read this the first time, I just felt like we. We and bidders may need some more time than what we had already built in, that was, those are the comments I had originally made.
If we looked at this, just say we vote and approve at our next meeting, say it's posted May 1st. Hypothetically.
Yep.
Christie, what do you think, how you, how would you think about putting those other dates in place?
I mean, so it has to go into central register, which only comes out in certain dates, so we would have to figure out what those dates are, and then, like I said in the beginning, when I had asked Sharon that question about dates, she said to give it 60 days, so it would be within the 60 days we would have the walkthrough and the question.
60 days from when it was posted central register to receiving back the RFPs. Okay.
Yeah.
So to that point, we're talking about sometime midsummer. RFPs coming back in.
Yeah, was there a question about?
Since we're not meeting in July and August, then we'll look at it, September, like Alan said.
I had a.
Chairman's prerogative.
Well, to your point, Christie, there, there are a lot of blanks here around, you know, between the time between the site visit and the receipt for written questions and then the turnaround from the town on response. I just want to make sure we're building enough time for an adequate period, but if, if we divide it up in those 60 days.
I think 60 days, I think it makes sense, I mean, because we can control the site visit, we own the property, we have the keys, we need to weld that, un-weld the doors. But. And then, once that is, I think you give it another week or whatever for questions, maybe two, but.
Well, I think that's where I was going, I just, you know, just giving people enough time and to, right.
Totally different thing when we do RFPs at work, it's really, you know, they give you not a ton of time because we typically wait till the last day to submit it anyway, so you almost want to. So I think you can almost, I mean, they'll be working on those, give them the site visit, give them a week and then post that. They have the ability to. I think that all can be done.
Okay.
Within the first, less than 30 days.
Yep, that makes sense, the, the next version will be ready for approval and there'll be dates in it, so you can review them then.
Okay, anything else? I think we're in a good spot here.
Good.
There's no motion. No motion, I don't think, I think we just.
No further discussion either.
Succinct. Okay, Town Manager's Report.
The Employee Excellence Award winner for March 2022 is Dan LaRoche, so he's served the town in the Buildings and Grounds Department for 35 years. Hydrant flushing continues with the Department of Public Works till the end of April, and they do have a schedule posted on the website. The Community Partnership Initiative Grant is a grant that I've been working with Jim Robbins, Fred Leonardo, and Mark Silverberg on. This grant would provide up to $150,000 in technical assistance for planning in a specific neighborhood. So consistent with the master plan, we've identified the downtown, and the grant focuses on reducing auto dependency, economic opportunities for disadvantaged populations, inclusive dense neighborhoods, and revitalization. And that grant is due, the application is due on Friday. Cross your fingers. Well, actually, probably come to this, come to the board on, even though the application will already be submitted, we'll, we'll probably put on your agenda on the 26th, a request for a letter of support, because Jim has been in contact with the agency, Mass Housing Partnership, that's doing the, the grant, and they've said that they might be willing to accept letters of support later. In the meantime, I'm going to provide a letter of support and so does CMRPC.
Would it be beneficial for the Affordable Housing Trust to provide a letter of support?
Any, any, any of them, I'll take them all, so yeah, that'd be great, if you have.
Email at NI details, we can do it under Other Business Thursday morning on our agenda.
Okay. We're also going to ask the EDC and the planning board. The Oda Street Corridor Study on April 4th, Ian and Fred and Jim and I all went with representatives from Atlantic Management to meet with the Lieutenant Governor and representatives from Mastot to present the Oda Street Corridor Study and discuss next steps and get some feedback on that, and so it was a really.
Very positive meeting, very good.
The Plastic Bag Bylaw Amendment that was passed at town meeting, I know there was concern about giving businesses notice. So there is a provision in that bylaw that once the bylaw becomes effective, there's a six-month sort of grace period for people to become compliant, but that does not apply to the amendment. It applied to the initial drafting of the bylaw. However, it does need to be approved by the Attorney General before it becomes effective, which is about 90 days. So we're send, we're sending out letters now, letting, we're working with Zach, our EDC Coordinator, and Jen, our Public Health Director, to send out letters. We're going to offer two dates for people to come in and ask questions, and we're giving them a, a date, an effective date of 90 days past town meeting, just to give them a date to be ready to comply. This board is the authority in terms of waiver in the pass that was delegated to the Town Manager, but we can talk about that as we get closer.
Do we also have to talk about, and I feel like at town meeting, there was a discussion, part of the discussion on the amendment was about enforcement, do we need to have a conversation given the amendment about enforcement?
There was no, the draft that I got that was submitted, there was no amendment. So there were, there were amendments that failed.
So the enforcement falls under what was under the existing.
Right.
Bylaw.
Exactly.
Which is us.
Right.
I believe, right?
Yes.
No, when I, I'm saying the amendment to Article 33.
Right.
So.
Didn't, it didn't change the enforcement that was already in the article.
Which is us as the enforcement agent?
Right.
Okay.
Or as me.
Okay.
And so the way that it's worked is really enforcement by complaint, so we got, we would, we got a couple complaints when we were first sort of transitioning. We sent warning letters, the board had set up a policy, so I'll look for that, about, you know, sort of what level of response these complaints would get. And then also when a waiver was appropriate, when the board felt a waiver was appropriate, so we can look at all of that as we get closer.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it would just be nice to be aware of, like Zach's work, you know, so we're aware of if.
So none of that is Zach, all of that would be.
No, no, I'm just thinking about the rollout of this amendment, the rollout of the changes once approved by the Attorney General, whatever work we're doing to outreach.
No, we're doing that now.
We're doing that right now.
Prior to the Attorney Generals.
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
So we can send, so we haven't, we're, we are still drafting the letter.
Yep.
So we'll send that out, you'll see that when it goes out. And there's, there'll be two meetings which you are welcome to attend. And there's, there'll be two meetings, which you are welcome to attend.
Yeah, I think letting us know about that, because I do, and I, I I think we should be there for the business community and hear their concerns and also express if.
Sure, you know, we certainly intended to share that.
And we apologize that they didn't get notification ahead of time, because I do feel like we.
They, they did not get it ahead of time, because we closed the warrant the day we got the petition.
Exactly.
So.
No, I think we just explain that to them, I just think it's important that.
Um, Kim talked about the massive community first partnership already, um, when we talked about the Energy Advocate Intern. For the Department of Public Works, uh, the Department of National Accidents awarded the DPW, uh, ninety-six hundred dollar safety grant um, to fund four department-wide training events. Uh, the Division of Ecological Restoration approved fifty thousand dollars in additional grant funding to support analysis of the culvert system at the Upton Road and Moore Street intersection. Um, and the DPW implemented a newly developed flood prevention program, uh, in advance of that event. Oh, sorry, in advance of an event that could cause, uh, over a hundred hotspots organized in accordance with the ten. DPW sectors are inspected by ten teams to identify issues that might prevent proper flow of water. Uh, the Fire Department's working with MIMA to obtain a grant, obtain grant funding that will pay for the town's hazardous mitigation plan to be renewed. Um, the Fire Department has also organized an interactive educational night for several boards and committees, you all got the invitation. Uh, to work with the firefighters, utilizing various types of public safety equipment. Um, and then this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, so they ask that we take a moment and recognize the hard work of the sixteen nine-one-one dispatchers that serve our community. And then the Police Department provided data on, uh, the three towns' use of the jail diversion program, um, just showing that Westboro, uh, uses that. Frequently.
To that point, back on the, the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, since that came through, I guess so to the board, is it? Do we send a acknowledgement and a thank you to them, um, through the Town Manager from the board as to.
Yeah.
Recognition and thank you for them during this week? Would that be acceptable to the?
Absolutely.
Right of you.
Thank you, Christie.
I'm all set.
Great. Issues and correspondence of the Select Board. Who wants to start? Shelby, I'm going to go to you first tonight.
Oh, short straw.
Yeah.
I just want to, uh, thank the, um, uh, Lions Club for hosting their annual duck derby.
And congratulations to you.
Third place, good thing my duck was powered. No, I'm just kidding, it was still not. It got caught up at the gate at the last, it was, it was in the lead, but, um, um, it was, it was.
Called Rosie Ruiz.
No, it was, it was, the rain cleared and it was a nice turnout, and folks can watch that on Westboro TV. So, um, they raised money for their scholarships and some, some of their other, um, um, or, or causes that they support, so that was great. And that is all that I had this evening.
Great. Yes, Sean, sorry.
Um, yes, so the, um, the, uh, Westboro Library Building Committee. There was a library forum on March twenty-ninth, held on March twenty-ninth, led by Maureen Amiata, our library director, and Mary Johnston, who's Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. Um, they did a terrific job of sort of explaining kind of the situation and, and where we've come since two thousand and sixteen and sort of all that's evolved since that time. Um, it is available on Westboro TV or through Westboro TV's YouTube channel. If you are interested in the project, I encourage you to go take a look at it. That's all.
Great, Alan.
Okay, um, this is an update from the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust. As many may be aware, um, we have an apartment complex with, it's a hundred and twenty units, twenty-four are affordable. The, um, the restriction on affordability expires at the end of September. We are working with the property owners to come up with a solution to maintain the affordability of those twenty-four units. Specifically, um, the housing, um, the Housing Trust has hired a consultant to identify applicable programs and state and federal funding that could provide the subsidies to the project to do that, and will also handle preparing all the paperwork for any application or program materials that are needed, so that we're, our goal and our intent is to minimize the friction and effort required by the property owner to move forward, and they're open. Um, they've got some pretty simple criteria, but they're open to participating in a program and continuing those units. And so, um, it's, time is tight, and we are working and pushing to move this forward as quickly as possible.
Patrick.
Sure, so I just have one item. Uh, on April thirtieth, uh, Sustainable Westboro, uh, is having the Westboro Energy Fair. It's also co-sponsored by the Rotary Club. It's from one to five P M. at Mill Pond. Um, it's featuring a number of different speaker presentations and exhibitors. I believe we've got a full, full room of exhibitors, so I encourage folks to come and learn and listen and get ideas, and, uh, I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the community. I'll also mention that our last Sustainable Westboro meeting, um, it was, it was shared that there is a lot of, um, regional interest in this, because we're the first town, I guess, in the region that has done something like this, so um, there's a lot of positive, um, momentum and, and involvement that looks like it's, uh, getting engaged in with this. So, uh, I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I just had two quick things. One, um, as, as liaison to, uh, the Recreation Commission, they had a meeting, um, last night related to, um, the request from, uh, the Town Manager and from the board about, uh, different committees looking at that state hospital property to evaluate whether there was any interest. They voted unanimously that they did not have, um, interest in the, um, the town, uh, use of, um, or the, for the rec department, the use of the Regal Cinema property as a, for municipal use. On their side for, uh, most notably, the Community Center project that they've been, um, discussing. Uh, so they didn't see a use for, uh, recreation, uh, purposes at that spot. So it was a quick meeting of that. Their next meeting, unfortunately, um, as the liaison, they typically hold their meetings the same times as our Select Board meeting, so their next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, when we'll be meeting, so I will not be able to attend, uh, that as the liaison. The other item to bring up was, uh, I did attend my first meeting of the, uh, trustees of, uh, Soldier's Memorial Meeting as the Chair of the Board. And, uh, a very good meeting, um, uh, with that, um, interesting for me to, uh, to get acquainted with, uh, or reacquainted with many of the folks, but also hear about that. A couple just things to bring up is we did have, uh, David Nurse come in, as he came before us, um, presenting in front of them the, uh, plans for the militia, um, recognition at Minuteman Park alongside the Minuteman. Uh, so that was presented, discussed, and is on the agenda for our next meeting, which is May second, uh, for a vote, um, on moving forward. Discussion was had about, um, you know, moving forward, how that would be done, and I think it was unanimous that this would be something that would be looked to be fundraised for, not go to taxpayers, looking for taxpayer dollars, but try to do, um, fundraising uh, through the community, uh, for the, uh, production and, uh, placement of that. Uh, and the, the thinking is that that would go alongside, um, or somehow arranged with the, the existing, uh, Minuteman Memorial. Um, and again, the discussion was about, um, because there are some names that are either misspelled or one that's missing on the Minuteman, it will not be to remove what's there, but to, uh, recognize the Minuteman and the militia, um, on the, the, uh, the second memorial that we placed there. Um, the second thing, and I think we've all received this, but for the town as well, that the plans are in place for a traditional, um, uh, Memorial Day Parade this year, uh, in person, uh, with all those stops. So hopefully, uh, folks have, uh, seen that, for what the town to, to plan, this is a great event, uh, as, uh, for the community. We have so many people come out, um, uh, in attendance, but also for various, uh, middle school bands, high school bands, uh, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, uh, veterans, et cetera. So, um, look forward to, uh, to that and to us participating in that as a board, um, as we normally do. So that is everything that I had, and, uh, Vice Chair, are you ready?
Oh, sure, so, um. I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Department of Public Works Union, under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One A Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at two thirty-one Turnpike Road and Zero Ruggle Street.
And as Chair, I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and negotiating position, and the board will not be reconvening in an open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a second to the motion?
I have a second.
I have three people's second, that's great. We're all excited about this. Okay, roll call, vote, uh.
Marshall, yes.
Okay.
E O, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
And Johnson, yes, so we will go into executive session. I forgot, I was remiss, to thank Westboro TV, uh, as always, for, uh, their, um, broadcasting of this meeting, so thank you. We are in executive session.